Welcome, everybody. I would like to call the special meeting of the Trenton School Board to order at 6:31 PM. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Secretary French, will you please call overall?
Mrs. Howie.
Here.
Mr. Gerhardt is absent. Mr. French is here. Mrs. Drake.
Here.
Mr. Hawkins.
Here.
Mrs. Hilton.
Here.
And Mrs. Lear.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Item 1.03, Public Comments. There should be a phone number displayed for anyone that would like to call in with a comment, and we'll give you just a minute to do that. With that, we will turn it over to Dr. Rod Green, who will be introducing our first candidate. We have two interviews tonight, and this is candidate number one.
Okay, good to see everybody. This is Nelson Henry. He is principal in Romulus. So Nelson, come on in, say hello to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins, Ms. Drake, Mr. French, Ms. Howie, Ms. Lear, Ms. Hilton. Good evening.
Good evening. We have a total of 21 questions, and we're going to rotate and go around and ask those questions. We're going to give you an opportunity before we start and then at the end for some additional comments that you might want to give. And then we have a timer set when we have 15 minutes left, so you'll hear that go off, and that'll kind of tell us where we are in the process. But I wanted to thank you for coming tonight, and just to introduce myself, I'm Kelly Howie. I'm the president of the school board, and we go way back. And it's nice to have you here. I have three daughters, two graduates of the district, and one who's a senior this year. And as you know, I'm a CPA with Plant Moran, and I'll have all the board introduce themselves when they ask their question. But at this point, if you're comfortable taking off your mask, you're welcome to do that. Your choice. If you would just give us a brief introduction about your background and your experience and why you're interested in the superintendent position, and then we'll start our questions.
Sure thing. Once again, good evening, board, and thank you, President Howie. When I thought of Y-Trenton, this is my fifth school district that I have been in, that I'm currently serving in, in two different states in 22 years. I have been fortunate to be an award-winning teacher and have been at the leadership level, elementary school, middle school, high school, and central office, from a traditional setting to special education, bilingual education, multicultural education, and gifted and talented. A wide array. Y-Trenton in particular. When I was preparing for this interview, and everything that I read about Trenton, the one word that stuck out in my mind was opportunity, that Trenton is pregnant with opportunity. And I think it would be a great opportunity for me at this point in my career to bring my skill set, to merge with the opportunities that are already here, to help move Trenton School District from good to great.
And with that, we'll get started with Rachel Hilton.
Sure thing.
You all came out the gate. We have the CPA and the attorney. So when I think of culture in and of itself, my mind goes to, it is the combination of attitudes, beliefs, customs, and values of a community or organization, a group of people. It is their way of life. And so when we talk about attitudes, beliefs, customs, and values, I think that the educational setting is that place where students get their foundation, they are their own citizens in their own community, as we are preparing them and providing a pipeline for them to be citizens in the more global community. I believe that the role of the superintendent is that of the servant leader, to take all of the information available as it relates to, and merge all the stakeholders around those attitudes, beliefs, customs, and values. So when we say that, we're talking stakeholders, excuse me, there's a net there, stakeholders as it relates to students, parents, staff members, and community stakeholders. I'm Ms. Lear.
I'm Mrs. Lear. I'm the newest member of the board. I've been, I was appointed in December, so I'm fairly new to all of this. I have a third grader at the elementary school and a seventh grader at the middle school, and I have your next question this evening. Please describe your leadership approach in developing an administrative team. What steps did you take to do so, and what challenges did you encounter along the way?
So if you don't mind, I'm Ms. Lear. There were several components in that question. I want to make sure I hit all of them, so could you repeat that, please?
Sure thing. Please describe your leadership approach in developing an administrative team. What steps did you take to do so, and what challenges did you encounter along the way?
Thank you. Thank you for the question. Just a side note, is your third grader at Anderson or Hecky?
Hecky.
Just inquisitive. So when it comes to a leadership approach, my specific approach is more of that of the collaborator. I recognize that someone who sits in the seat of authority, whether it is a father of a home, a superintendent of a school district, a principal of a school, a teacher, we know that you have authority by position, but I really think that, you know, you should have authority by example and by influence, that you're using your influence properly. With that in mind, one of the teams that I could think of that I had an integral part in assembling was I was the principal of an elementary school that I actually, at some point, was consulting with as an evaluator of their teachers. I went back another school year to be their instructional coach, wound up filling in a vacancy to be their assistant principal, went to serve in two other schools, and then came back to be the principal. With that in mind, we were moving into the MyExcel Blueprint. You may be familiar with it, and it's just a set of procedures and processes and systems that is pushed through the Michigan Department of Education. So we had to build a leadership team for the school. Steps that went into that were, is that I simply asked, I assessed what was there. And as I said at the beginning, leadership has to do not just with position, but with your influence. So I observed and looked to see who were the influencers in the school, who did people rally around. And those were the individuals who I went to and asked them to serve on the team. Some of the challenges included, but were not limited to, you know, their willingness to serve, for the most part, they were. But for some, they declined because their thought processing was, well, this is another initiative that the school district is coming up with, and every year, every two years, we're always trying the next best thing. And I was trying to share with them that leadership, regardless of what the initiative is, is necessary to move the school forward. So for the most part, they were willing to join, but there were some challenges. Sure thing.
I actually get two questions back to back because I'm filling in for our vice president of the board, Sean Gerhardt, who is an architect, and he's actually working out of town, and he has two children in our district. So I'm going to read this to you twice. It's a little lengthy. Discuss a time you established a vision or strategic plan for your school or district. What process was used for planning? How was the plan implemented? And what was the result? And I'll read it again. Discuss a time you established a vision or strategic plan for your school or district. What process was used for planning? How was the plan implemented? And what was the result?
I was involved, Ms. Howie, on behalf of the vice president. I was involved in a particular project in a school district as a teacher and as an administrator, and so this is a unique situation. We had an instance where we were trying to institute a program that catered to our gifted and talented students. And so we wanted to create a pipeline of sorts or an alignment from the elementary level to the middle school level to the program that we already had at the high school level. With that, it was called the Lorraine Monroe Leadership Institute, after the famed educator Lorraine Monroe. And so my involvement as a teacher and as an administrator were kind of similar because at some point we started it and we stopped. So the process was that we called together a focus group. We got a focus group of staff members together to get their input. The superintendent casted the vision. He shared it with a few of us over the summer. It was our responsibility to inform the focus group. After the focus group came together, we got a cohort of students who met a certain criteria as our pilot to get it started. So they did, we got the group together, we informed their parents. That was part of the process. When they came back to school, because this actually started over the summer, when they came back to school, we had parent meetings, we had student meetings, just to get everyone on the same page about this wonderful new opportunity. With that in mind, we actually did a site visit. The team, the focus group team, did a site visit in New York. We traveled to New York to spend a couple of days with Dr. Lorraine Monroe, so we can pick her brain and to see up close some of the schools in the New York City School District that she had instituted the program. And we understood the program by seeing it on paper, but we got a better understanding when we went to see it in person, how it works, the highs, the lows, the strengths, the weaknesses, where we are in implementation. The next part was implementation. We rolled it out that school year with a cohort with one grade, one section per grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. This was to serve as our pipeline or our feeder to our high school honors program. The results of that were, is that we noticed that a large percentage of the students who went third grade through eighth grade, one, we had retention, because we understand that when students go from elementary school to middle school, and then middle school to high school, those transitional times, that's usually where we lose students. And so we were able to increase our retention, and also, a majority of those students went through the high school program, and it was a dual-degree program, so they were able to come out of high school with a degree, an associate's degree, that was paid for by the district and a high school diploma. They actually received their associate's degree the weekend before they officially finished high school. And so that's the implementation, process implementation and results of a vision.
Good answer. Thank you. My next question, the pandemic has impacted education now and in the future. How will you manage the effects, including changes to education this year?
So the first thing is, is that it has affected all of us, somewhere or another, whether it's directly with those who have dealt, who have contracted it, or those who have dealt with death. As it relates to school, and specifically here at Trenton, I recognize that there is a multi-dimensional thing going on here as it relates to having students in school at the elementary level for some days and then virtual at the secondary level. And so in the school district where I currently serve, we are all virtual. I don't have a preference one way or another, but we do want to make decisions that are in the best interest of children. So with that in mind, understanding the pulse of what is happening in Trenton by conversations, by stakeholder surveys, by knowing what's going on already, what's working, what's not, following the science where we are in October, November, and beyond, and then really future casting to ensuring that we have a strong virtual option for students, because I believe that our worlds are forever changed, and traditional education has certainly changed. And so instead of being reactive, we can be proactive and fine-tune that program that already exists in Trenton Public Schools.
Hi, I'm David French. I'm currently serving as board secretary. I've been with the board for eight years. I have six children, three stepchildren, we have a blended family, come through Trenton Public Schools. They're all done. I don't have to deal with any of that today. So with that, I'm asking question number five tonight. Describe a time when you came up with a creative solution to a school-related problem. What was the outcome?
Thank you, Mr. French. One, we're sad that we no longer get foundation allowance from anyone in your family, but thank you for your service to the board. We have to think about that in this seat. You have to think about, you know, follow the dollars. But seriously, there was an instance in one of my schools that I was, I served as principal in, and we were seeing an issue with discipline. And very oftentimes, we tend to give our energy towards the students who are causing the trouble. I like to call it misguided energy. So we tend to give our energy to that, opposed to celebrating the students who are doing well and reinforcing positive behavior to hopefully influence positive change. So the leadership team and I, we got together, and they brought to me this data. I mean, and they were steaming. I mean, you know, we had a courageous conversation, and, you know, "Mr. Henry, we're not saying that it's you," but, I mean, they just started listing things. And I sat there and I listened, and I looked over the data, and I said, "Okay, let's do this." So we did a protocol. I said, "Okay, so pick your top six concerns." I mean, the list was pages and pages. Pick your top six concerns. So we narrowed it down to six. Of the six, pick your top four of this list now, whether your six were included first. We went to the top four. From that, I said, "Okay, so let's look at these, let's see if they align with the data." And indeed, they did. So I said, "Okay, let's think about it for a little while. We'll come back at our next leadership team meeting." At our next leadership team meeting, I was very proud of the team, that they did not come back with more problems, but they came back with solutions. And we came up with like three solutions. I'll mention one, because this was the positive thing, because this was the results part of your question, Mr. French. The results were, we created something called the Golden Ticket with the principal, the Golden Ticket. And so it was literally, we planned something, this was like for the fourth quarter of the school year, and we know weather is getting better, students are getting tired of being in school, they, you know, spring break, Memorial Day, June is coming, so, you know, that energy, that momentum was beginning to wane. We created something called the Golden Ticket Program, the Principal's Golden Ticket Program. In that program, we selected a certain number of students out of every class every week who had a chance to do something with the principal. So I asked my staff, I said, "Well, what is it?" I asked the leadership team, "What is it that you need of me?" And they said, "Mr. Henry, we need you to clear your schedule every Friday from this time to this time. We'd like, we need you to clear it, because it can't be the Principal's Golden Ticket Program if they're not spending time with the principal." I said, "You have it. I'm there. You need anything else?" Well, of course, they needed some money. They told me the time thing first, you know, they had, you had to soften up first. So I said, "Okay, you know, whatever we need to do, we'll do it." I'm glad to say that the impact that it had, specifically on the students who had that misguided energy, a good percentage of them would run up to me in the hallway on a Thursday, "Oh, my God, Mr. Henry, I got the Golden Ticket! I got the Golden Ticket! I'll be with you tomorrow." And that could have been that we were having popcorn time, ice cream social, pizza party, a free gym period, that I would be the chaperone in there the whole time, so we're playing basketball together. We were able to have enough money to get a video game cart, an eighteen-wheeler, and students were able to play. And so instead of going after, and it did actually fix some of the other behavior, too, the students were like, "Ah, I didn't get it this week, but I'm going to get it next week." So that was something that was positive, opposed to always catering to the misguided energy students.
Hi, I'm Megan Drake. I am a parent of two younger children here, first and second grade. I am also a teacher at another district. So my question here is, tell us about a long-term initiative you've led in curriculum development, and describe how you would provide leadership in curriculum for the district.
So a long-term initiative that I led, I was in a particular school, and it's going to start off one way, but it does end positively. We were a priority school. We had not been making annual yearly progress. And that's never a label that you want to have. Good thing Trenton doesn't have that label, top ten Wayne County standardized test, so we're doing okay. But I have had that experience. And so we were there, and we applied for a grant through my school district, but I was instrumental in helping to secure the grant. We applied for a grant to get off of the priority school list. And we were able to secure, just for our school alone, a quarter of a million dollars. It was amazing. We were able to secure $750,000 over a period of three years or so. And with that in mind, we were able to use our data to hire interventionists for students. We were able to hire specialists who worked with teachers and instructional coaches. We were also able to put some programs into place to get us off of that list and to keep us off of that list. So with that in mind, that was something that I did in that regard. What was the second part of your question, Ms. Drake? Because I want to make sure I address it.
...how you would provide leadership in curriculum for the district.
Absolutely. So I think the first thing, and especially being a newcomer into the district, is to first assess what is already happening here. Assess what curricular pieces we have at the elementary level, the middle school level, the high school level, even our subgroups. There's only so much information that the website gives. I understand about the AP offerings. I understand about all the extracurricular activities that we share with our students. But just to assess what's going on and ensuring that the data and the resources are all going towards curriculum, instruction, and assessment. That is so important, to make sure that the data and the resources, whether they're human resources, time and scheduling resources, financial resources, are all aligned to go with curriculum, instruction, and assessment, and make sure that there's alignment there to further set our students up for success. Thank you, Ms. Drake.
I'm Mike Hawkins. I'm our longest-serving board member. I've been 13 years on the board. I'm a police officer here in the city. I've been there for 19 years. I have three boys in the district, one in the high school, one in the middle school, and one in the elementary school. So I've got question number seven for you, and it kind of dovetails on the last. If you were selected as a superintendent, tell us how you would make an impact on our school district in the first couple months on the job.
First of all, Mr. Hawkins, thank you for your service to Trenton and Trenton Public Schools, and your longevity in investing in us and keeping us safe by being the employer of the superintendent and keeping us safe on the street. So thank you for that. As it relates to what I would do, usually when I go into, it's been the whole tenure of my leadership, when I go into a school or a district, I have a 30-for-30 plan. The 30-for-30 plan are 30 things that I plan to do within the first 30 days on the job. That include, but are not limited to, I won't list all 30, but as it relates at the central office level, to meet with all of the leading administrators, Human Resources Director, the Director of Curriculum and Technology, meet with the business and operations, meet with everyone in central office individually, meet with every building leader individually, meet with the union presidents, teachers' union presidents and other union presidents, specifically understanding, if I read it correctly, that this is the end of a contract. So, you know, we need to understand, you know, their needs and their desires. These meetings would have, would be for me to introduce myself, for them to introduce themselves, for me to understand their roles in the districts, get some of their desires, some of their needs, some of their wants, strengths that we have in the district that we can continue to highlight, and opportunities for growth that we could funnel resources toward. So that's one of the things that you would get immediately, should I be selected as the educational trustee of Trenton Public Schools.
Okay. Most districts have had to make budget cuts at some point. Tell us about the process you would use as our superintendent if we would need to make cuts.
So I think, you know, education is already one of those, one of those professions that we have an awesome burden to provide, but underfunded for that. However, I believe that any decision, and specifically fiscal decisions, should be based on fiscal integrity and fiscal intelligence. And what I mean specifically by that is to assess our financial status, assess our needs in the district, and make sure that I collaborate with the Director of Finance, Business, Operations to find out what's available to us. Excuse me, that Matt has come back to visit the interview. But to make sure, I know what's available to us, and to make decisions in the best interest of children, that will have high impact, high academic impact, high athletic impact, high arts. impact, high arts, fine and visual arts impact, that will give a liberal arts education to our students, but to have, to minimize risk, if at all possible. And when we're cutting, there are risks, and there's some, someone, some faction that's going to kind of lose out, but to make sure that the majority stays whole.
I have question number nine. To be a successful superintendent, you will have to deal with a wide range of personalities. How will you handle this, and how do you do conflict resolution?
I think I'm, I think I have a, thank you. Maybe, just maybe, everyone has at least three personalities in them that they're all fighting with any given day, just a little humor, you know, the good, the bad, and the thing that we don't want to go in the seat. But seriously, I recognize and respect that every stakeholder, from a kindergartner to the longest-serving board member, to a principal, to a teacher, they all come to school, their environment, their work environment, their learning environment, with some form of education, some form of experiences, strengths, weaknesses, highs, lows, things that really light up their world, things that they, they want to stay away from, things that they would be willing to share with everyone, and things that I really don't want that flashing across the forehead of my life for everyone to see. And so, with that in mind, I respect individuality. I do, because it's important. Variety, it's been said that variety is the spice of life. And so, I respect individuality. In the context of a school district setting, as it relates to making decisions for children, I think that it's always important to lift our collective purpose over our individual personalities. It's not that we dismiss the personalities, that's why I said it at first. And that's, that's happened with me, that no matter what type of personality I have, and if I'm straightforward, or if I need to be, and if I need to just listen for that day, and not give direction, but just listen, or if I need to give direction and say, "Hey, this is what's mandated. We need to find the best way to get this across." So, definitely engage them, respect and acknowledge personalities, but to lift our collective purpose. I hope I answered the second part of that question. I know I got the first one. Thank you.
Okay, I know you touched on this a little bit. What is your philosophy of leadership as it relates to employees? And tell us what you have found to be the most rewarding aspect of leading others and the most challenging.
Yes, please.
What is your philosophy of leadership as it relates to employees? Tell us what you have found to be the most rewarding aspect of leading others and the most challenging.
So, as it relates to leadership, I would think of myself more as a visionary and a transformative leader. I think in this seat, it is the superintendent's job to get the heartbeat and the pulse of the community that is represented by, mainly by their employer, the board, and to see how that beat goes with, gels with all the other stakeholders who are connected to that heartbeat. I believe that leadership is so rewarding, and it's rewarding because it's good to see someone not just give direction, but to be in it with people. Just as a simple example, but I'm so serious about it. I was walking through the school today, and our staff is working from school, but the students are virtual. And so, I went into the physical education teacher's classroom, the female physical education teacher's classroom. So, she's on Google Hangouts Meet, and they're doing this exercise program. And so, she's like, "Hey, Mr. Henry's in here. Ladies, do you all want to see him do jumping jacks?" And so, mask and all, and badge flying this way, and keys flying that way. I was doing jumping jacks with the young ladies. And I know that that's on a school level, but whoever you are in one instance is usually who you are throughout. And so, with that in mind, it is rewarding to be in it with people. So, when you understand the struggle, you all will appreciate the success together. A challenging time that I've had in leadership is that I believe that a leader, anywhere, is taking people where they really want to go, but where they're rarely willing to go on their own. Let me say that again, that a leader is one who is taking people where they really want to go, but where they're rarely willing to go on their own. Like, that's why we have accountability partners when we're working out, or if we're saving money, you know? We don't put it under the mattress. We put it in the bank or the credit union, because a shoe sale might roll across Facebook or some social media, and you spend that. So, with that in mind, we do that in education as well, but it's not always that there is an instant willingness. So, when there are curriculum changes, when there are financial downsizing that we have to do, when there's staff downsizing, because those are some of the realities, you know, we have to still just make sure that we focus on the collective purpose. I hope that answered the question, Ms. Hawkins.
And the next question, again, you did, did mention this, we are finalizing negotiations with our union. So, the question is, how will you approach negotiations with our bargaining units? And describe your experience in working with labor relations.
One of the things that I've, I've been fortunate to serve as, that I didn't mention at the beginning, is that I was a union president of a teachers' union of a school district. And our task was to eliminate one million dollars in, in the budget from our bargaining unit. So, basically, you know, the superintendent comes to me, "Nelson, welcome. Congratulations. Glad they elected you president. Now, we need one million dollars, and you have like a few months to make this happen." And so, I will bore you, I will not bore you with the details, but we were fortunate that we were able to look in the contract, trim some of the fat, healthcare remained, no one was laid off, and worst-case scenario, we were thinking we would have a pay freeze. Not only do we not have a pay freeze, but everyone still received their pay steps. And so, it is not because I'm so smart, it has to do with the fact that I was connected to smart people. I just was the spokesperson for a group of smart people. And so, with that in mind, for contract negotiations here, because I don't know if our union presidents are watching or not, but I think that you know what's in a person's heart by what comes out of their mouths. The first thing I would do is listen. And I think in order to listen, you have to be silent. Those, those are two different words spelled with the same letters, listen and silent. And so, I think that I would silently listen with my ears and my heart and my mind open, and see, once again, how I can cater to their wants, their desires, their needs, in reference to our financial resources, the data, so we can make data-driven decisions, and what's best for, what we feel that's best collectively for Trenton Public Schools. So, we would start there by listening, and then we would probably prioritize their needs and wants, and like, if you can't live without one thing, but you can sacrifice another, what would that list be? Break it down until we have some sort of consensus.
Hello again. I have question twelve. Provide specific examples of how you contribute to or facilitate the staff's support and morale.
It is my belief that people don't care how much you know until you know how much you care. And so, I only know how to be one way, so I have to be myself. I had, I told my current staff about this opportunity, because of course, I received the call last Monday night, and on Tuesday, we went about business as usual educating students, and we had professional development on Wednesday. When we had professional development on Wednesday, I still hadn't said anything, we're about the task of educating students, and that is where I'm currently working. So, that gets my attention. It started coming up in the chat, though, Mr. French. "Congratulations, Mr. Henry. Congratulations." Then other people started chiming. I'm like, "Oh, okay." And I didn't see it in the chat. I was focused on, you know, you're, you're trying to look at people, and you only have sixteen little people on your, on your screen while you're doing professional development and trying to have the information up. And so, when I saw this in the chat, and it was brought to my attention at the end of the day, the first thing the next morning I did, I rallied the staff together. I said, "You know, can you all meet me in this room? I want to talk to you for a moment." And we were socially distanced, of course, and had all the masks on and things of that nature. So, what I shared with them, I shared with them, I said, "Hey," you know, I gave them a little background information and said, "You know, I'm, I've been selected to be one of the five finalists for the Trenton job." People started clapping. I was kind of surprised. And I was like, "Oh, okay, I wasn't saying it for that." And, and I went on to explain some other things to them, and these were some of the comments, and this is why I mentioned it, specific to your question. Some of the comments were, "Mr. Henry, thank you for your transparency. Mr. Henry, we're happy for you." And several people, even as of recent, as driving here, "We would hate to lose you, but they would be blessed to have you." And I don't say that as arrogance. I said it because it's important that you build relational trust with people. And I don't just want them to see me in the seat of authority, but I want them to be able to respect my humanity as well. I breathe, I hurt, I have feelings, I'm dealing with the pandemic and loss, but I'm still, I'm still casting the vision for a school and looking to do it for a school district, still sounding in my right mind and making sound decisions for our school. And that's what I would bring, some of what I would bring to Trenton Public Schools.
Okay, I have question thirteen. Please describe your involvement with bond issues, or energy projects, or construction projects, to improve facilities or developing a facilities plan.
It is my hope that the twenty-year bond that is coming up for renewal on November third, that it passes for, for Trenton, so that we can continue the work, the amazing work that's being done with the capital campaign and the improvements of the buildings and the technology infrastructure, and the curriculum infrastructure that's going on. I think one thing of note to me that just happened to jump out at me was the new eleven-lane swimming pool. This is just amazing. And so, with that in mind, if I were here before the bond started, as being the face of the district and going out to do that, probably would have conducted, and will conduct if I'm selected, and, you know, we have another bond during my tenure, church and community tours. That is challenging to do during a pandemic, but we could, you know, put a video together with our amazing audiovisual team that's represented here tonight, put together a video to sell our success to the citizens of Trenton. I have been involved in it, so I can speak to that. And what I have been involved in, I would bring here, is that in another district, I was responsible for organizing a community and church tour. And what we basically did was, is that the superintendent, a few administrators, and a student representation went to church services, and we got with the community, the ministerial alliance in the community, as we could do here with St. Thomas, or the partnership that you already have with Faith United Methodist Church and others, because our students worship at these facilities, they, they shop at these stores. And so, we need the community to know what you're helping to invest in. You are inspiring in that, that success for today, for what we want to create tomorrow. So, that church tour had to do with talking points from the superintendent, visibility from the administration and parents, and some sort of small student demonstration of what they would be investing in. So, we took sometimes the drum line, and it's nothing like taking a drum line into a church sanctuary where the majority of people are older, and you hear that first boom on the bass drum, it wakes everybody up. It's not the Holy Spirit. But I mean, I, I'm joking, but it is imperative that we get the word out, and that visibility and accessibility, and that superintendent, I would help delete that charge.
If you were chosen for this position, what do you foresee would be the most significant challenges for you in leading our district?
No, no, Mr. Hawkins, thank you, sir. I think one of the challenges would be that I would be starting into the school year already. I think that is a challenge, and not, you know, at the beginning of the fiscal year, simply just because of how this played out and this opportunity became available. I think that another challenge would be what we are facing with the pandemic, and all the things that come along with that and affect our families and affect our school district. A third challenge would be the unpredictability of the Michigan Department of Education, our state and our nation, and how funding is going to look after this year, and what cuts. I'm, I'm aware of the foundation allowance that you have now, but I'm also aware that our state basically was shut down for about five months, and there were no sales tax, decreased sales tax generated. So, those would be immediate challenges that I would have to proactively hit the ground running, and be that creative problem solver and thinker, critical thinker, with the core team of central office, and with those leaders around the district, and primarily with the Board of Education to present to you all viable options to vote on for the decisions.
We're on number fifteen. What opportunities do you see to help our district improve student academic achievement for all students?
Thank you, Attorney Hilton. So, when I look at Trenton, I start off by telling you that I, I thought, why Trenton? Because when I look at Trenton, when I studied, I just saw opportunities. I just saw, I saw opportunities. I saw, and so, when you come from a background where you use, you have to put on a cape and kind of save the day and work up just to get to the start line, whereas the race is already going on, and I see Trenton Public Schools way out in the way, opportunities now would be to move us from good to great. And so, what, this is the second time that I've said this, so kind of what exactly do I mean by that? I'll, I'll give a hint of it. When I looked at the four schools, and I, and I know that our data, that all of our schools have Bs or As in proficiency and growth on assessment data, and that our subgroups are above average or significantly above average, that is pretty good. And you look, well, you know, first thing a superintendent would look at to say, "Well, there are no, there's no achievement gap. There is no achievement gap." But I do believe that as much as there are opportunities here, there's an opportunity gap. I'm going to list one in particular, and I hope to be called back for a second interview to share with you all my five-year vision for the school district. One in particular, though, I was reading the census for Trenton, and I noticed that about ninety-four percent of the students graduate from high school. I also noticed that same group during the period of time of 2014 to 2018, that the census reported that a fourth of those students had some sort of college degree. And that is no knock. As a visionary leader, you're supposed to come in and see those things. So, my mind immediately went to, when I read the website and looked at Trenton High School and saw all of the offerings, why, and I didn't see it, if it, if it exists, why don't we have a partnership with Wayne County Community College District Downriver? So, we can ensure that when students graduate from high school, that they also have at least an associate's degree. It puts them in a better place, so whereas a person like me got through high school first, then got an associate's, then went on to get a master's and so on and so forth, that they will be ahead of the game when dollars that were already invested as citizens just repurpose and target it for, after they walk across the stage. And so, if they choose to go into the workforce with the wonderful opportunities around here, if they choose to go into athletics and add their name to all of the other wonderful names that are in Major League Baseball and the National Hockey League that have come from Trenton, if they choose to do that, that's fine. But if they want to go on to higher education, we've already given them an extra head start in addition to what parents and families and good working people like yourselves and people who are watching, and people who are not watching, who will be affected by our decisions, that's one thing in particular that will be an opportunity for change. That probably wouldn't happen year one. I think that's in about year three or four of my five-year plan, but it's definitely there.
Number, question number sixteen. How do you define the well-rounded student? If selected, how would you help our students become well-rounded and ready for post-secondary?
Okay, Ms. Lear. My undergraduate degree is from Morehouse College, historically, black college in Atlanta, Georgia. Such alum, Dr. Martin Luther King, Samuel Jackson, Spike Lee, Nelson Henry, who was fortunate to attend there. One of the things that we had there that I've, I've carried with me are the five WELLS. And I think that the five WELLS, W-E-L-L, would work here in Trenton as well, that a well-rounded That a well-rounded student, um, in Trenton would be well-read, well-traveled. And when we say well-traveled, even if you're not able to go there and we understand that we're not able to do that as much during this time to bring it to them. Uh, well-read, well-traveled, well-dressed, well-spoken, and well-balanced. And I think that balanced approach, um, is important. And I think that my vision for that aligns with what Trenton is already doing in which there is an emphasis on academics, athletics, and the arts. And I would come to help support that in this role.
Question seventeen. What does staff development look like in your school or district? And how do you evaluate its effectiveness?
So currently under my, uh, leadership, um, this is my second year at this particular school. But remember, five school districts, two different states. So this is my, my fifth year here, uh, second year here. Um, is that our, my emphasis year one was on culture and climate because we didn't have the best perception. It's a middle school. Once again, parents are likely to take their children out of a district after elementary school, depending on how the middle school is. And so, uh, we worked on culture and climate last year. Our focus this year is on instruction specifically as it relates to staff development and professional learning communities. So with that in mind, uh, professional learning communities, it's not just staff getting together to shoot the breeze, but it's, it's focused around four major questions. What are the students expected to learn? How do we know if they learned it? Question number three, what happens if they don't learn it? Question number four, what happens when they do learn it? And I think gearing professional development and staff development around a model, whether it's the professional learnings community model or other models. We, uh, I'm familiar with the correlates of effective schools and, and other models. Whichever one, uh, that after assessing kind of where we are in the district that we'll go forth with, we'll get staff involvement, uh, sell that message and try to sell it for the sake of that it's not just for compliance. Like I mentioned earlier, it's another thing that we're doing because we have another leader. But it becomes now a natural part of their instructional practice. Now we're having data, data-driven conversations, so that we're able to make data-driven decisions. Uh, one of my current staff members, and I'll conclude this answer with this. One of my, uh, current staff members, uh, mentioned something the other day. It was just out of the blue. I really appreciated him. He said, hey, Mr. Henry, I appreciate you and Mr. X for this example. Mr. X, for when I walk around the school, I don't hear staff members talking about random things, but they're having professional conversations. They're talking about data, they're talking about instructional practices. And we didn't put him up to that and he wasn't even with us the whole school year last year. So that was the impression that he had, and I would model that for us here.
Question eighteen. How will you move the district forward with technology planning? And how would technology be integrated into instruction?
So I'll start with the N in mind. Technology, uh, has been integrated in instruction without me. So it is already, the pandemic has, has pushed us there. But with that in mind, as I said earlier, uh, I believe now more than ever that a viable option for all school districts and almost all way of doing business has to have, uh, a strong virtual component, has to be a strong offering. Uh, no matter where it is, whether it's a business trying to sell products and we're not able to go, uh, to traditional fairs and things of that nature, we have to have that online and virtual presence. And so with that in mind, we have it set up for the students and we will continue that and, and broaden that. Uh, for staff members, we, they, they are in the student group right now. Uh, but specifically for stakeholders, for parents who aren't able to come into the building right now as a part of our return to learn plan and things of that nature. In order to hear their voice, because their vo- your voice is matter, not their voice, your voice is matter because you have students in the district, we would do something, what I would like to call stakeholder sound-offs. And that's just a fancy term for, uh, regular town hall meetings in order for them to get an ongoing, uh, status of the state of the district. Uh, and also to be able to share their feedback, to share their concerns, to give their commendations and kudos to us and let us know, look, I know what you're doing, but we, we don't like that. So to be able to, to have that platform, uh, to share that respectfully so that, that's a part of that accessibility, uh, and visibility that the superintendent needs to have.
Question nineteen. During the input sessions, our stakeholders told us they would like a superintendent who is highly visible and part of the community. What does this mean to you?
Thank you, Mr. French. Although I do not, uh, physically live in the community, um, I recognize that when you come, I am not one of those people that when I come to do a job, I do my job and leave. At that point, I am now invested. I'm, I'm investing my life, my intellectual capital, my, uh, educational backgrounds, my experiences, what I've been exposed to. And I'm also able to be the beneficiary and recipient of that as well. So what does that look like to me? It is, it is showing up at football games and, and having a hoodie on and, and being proud to be, uh, Superintendent Trenton Trojan. Uh, tha- that's what that looks like. What it looks like is, um, showing up, uh, at other events and supporting the band and know- knowing what they're doing, being visible in schools, making visits at least once a month. And I, I think that should be doable with, with our four schools. Uh, making sure that no subgroup is left unattended. I know our special education subgroup is small, but they matter. I know that our, our early childhood, um, population is small, but they matter. I recognize that our Great Start Readiness Program is small in population, but they matter. And really just being a champion for their cause. Once again, connecting to the resources that we have available to, uh, present ideas and suggestions to the board to get your approval on, to continue to move us forward.
Okay. Define the role of the board and the role of the superintendent. How would you keep the board informed regarding legislative issues and district-related issues? It's a long one, so I will repeat it. Um, and what would you do to keep the board and superintendent relationship healthy? So I'm going to read it again if, okay. Define the role of the board and the role of the superintendent. How would you keep the board informed regarding legislative issues and district-related issues? And what would you do to keep the board and superintendent relationship healthy?
The role of, uh, the Board of Education is to set policies for the school district. I believe the role of the superintendent is to be the person with the vision who cast the vision, communicates the vision to all of the stakeholders and connects the board and the stakeholders with that collective vision. So that's the relationship and the, um, role of those entities. How I would keep the form, the board informed, uh, would be to, uh, send you, now it's interesting because you said of legislation. So I would send, uh, legislative briefings and kind of give you, uh, the, the, the bottom shelf version of whatever, uh, new information and new reforms are coming out. Uh, also to have, um, to have representation, of course, at board meetings during the superintendent's report. Uh, and just being a phone call or a text message away. I am, I would be the only, uh, employee of the board and I recognize that. And so you would trust me to serve everyone else in the district. So those are some ways, not inexhaustible.
I have your last question, uh, number twenty-one. How would you create an atmosphere that celebrates diversity in both staff and students?
I don't know whether to wipe my brow, Mr. Hawkins, that we made it through it and we say the best of the last or what, but I, I, I have enjoyed it. So, um, I believe, and I, I want to speak specifically to twenty-twenty and kind of go broad and come in. We are in a time, uh, in our country and, and, and a time in history that, uh, diversity, inclusion, and equity has come to the forefront of almost every household, um, every city, every state. But what I love about a school district is that a school district is like a community within a community. And when you're walking through schools and having kindergartners and first graders who don't know you, but they're just waving frantically and speaking to you like, wow, you know, he's tall or, you know, whatever. Um, your feet are big, you know, they just say the darnedest things. Or when you have a tenth grader, uh, or an eleventh grader who is taking the ACT or SAT and they're, they're thinking about their next move because parents are like, you know, we've invested too much in you and this is your next move. But, so I think with that in mind, uh, the first thing is, is to respect individuality. Uh, and not, and not to say something like, you know, it has been said like America is the great, uh, melting pot. I beg to differ. I would almost think, you know, that Trenton is not the great melting pot either. I would almost call it like a salad bowl and kind of highlight the things we have in common. In most salads, we have lettuce. Now, there are some people who like tomatoes and there are some people who like croutons and there's some people who like onions and some people who don't like those things. Uh, but it's important that we recognize diversity, that we appreciate it as best we can, and that we never disregard it because we all have preferences. And I understand that preference has a price. And, you know, just preparing our students in our smaller society and preparing our staff and keeping their minds around it. Because, you know, I, I, I've studied the trends and I know that we've had students to, to leave from about thirty-two hundred to about twenty-five hundred students. I recognize things happen and businesses open and businesses close and parents move and families move and students come and go. But to create an environment, literally, where everyone is welcome.
Well, thank you. I, we appreciate you taking the time to, um, speak to us tonight and to interview with us. And I just want to give you a chance, if you have any closing remarks that you would like to make, anything else you'd like to tell us that we didn't ask during the question portion, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, President Howie and Trustees Lear, Hilton, French, Drake, Hawkins, and Gerhart in his absence. Thank you for your company, your conversation, and your careful consideration for me as superintendent. This is not a speech, this is who I am. This is my work ethic, this is what I believe. When the question was asked earlier about cultures, these are my attitudes, beliefs, customs, and values that, uh, every teacher brings something to an organization, that they bring something to a classroom. And that thirty or forty years from now, a student might not remember everything they were taught, but they'll never forget how that teacher made them feel. Uh, it's not about me, although it would be the top seat, although it would be the picture field on the wall outside. It's about making sure that we make decisions in the boardroom so that smiles and success can happen in the classroom. I prepared for this interview just like anyone would, I would hope. But I think that the last twenty-two years in my career as an award-winning teacher and union president and contract negotiator and administrator at all levels, uh, any, eva- teacher evaluator and, uh, instructional coach and a college, uh, instructor and brand school lecturer has prepared me, uh, to serve in my twenty-third year and beyond as superintendent. I approached this opportunity with honor and humility, uh, to serve you all. I look forward to sharing my thirty-for-thirty plan with you, uh, in the five-year, uh, vision for Trenton Public Schools if I am selected. Thank you so much for your time.
I'm going to wait and make sure we're up and running. We're good? Okay. Welcome back, everybody. We are going to begin interviewing our second candidate. And I just wanted to remind everybody that there is a link that you can make comments on and we'll be reviewing those comments after the end of the interview. So please feel free to use that. And at this point, I will turn it back over to Dr. Rod Green, who will introduce our next candidate.
Thank you. Good to see everybody again. And so come on in, this is Mary Ann, Dr. Mary Ann, sir. And she's going to be interviewing next, so go ahead and take your seat and.
Nice to meet everybody.
Nice to meet you.
Hello. Just imagine a handshake through osmosis. Absolutely. And just checking the protocol because if I'm comfortable, I can take my mask off, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I'll let you get set up there for a minute. Thank you for coming in to interview with us. We have 21 questions. We're going to go around the room and go through those questions. And before we start that, we'll ask you if you want to make some opening comments and then some closing comments at the end. We have a timer that will go off when there's 15 minutes left, so that'll kind of be our warning and we'll try to let you know what question we're on as we're going around so you just know how to, to kind of pace yourself. So it's nice to have you here. I do, I have been working with Mary Ann at one of my clients. So if you just want to give us a little general background and information before we start the question period, would you like to do that? Thank you.
It would be my pleasure. So first I want to say that I was particularly drawn to Trenton because it matches the values and beliefs and my moral compass and what I stand for as a leader. And so as I get to share who I am and what I'm about, hopefully you'll see that everything that you stand for resonates with the things that I'm going to share. In terms of my background, I have a Bachelor of Arts in English and what's called Let Francais, which is a French literature. I did that in Canada. I have a Bachelor of Education and a Master's of Educational Organization. And those degrees I did in Canada while I lived in Canada. And then we moved to Michigan. And I have an Ed Specialist in Leadership and Counseling from EMU. And I have my doctoral degree in Leadership and Supervision from the University of Toledo. In terms of my professional teaching background, I have taught everything from kindergarten right on through 13th grade. In Canada, we had 13 grades. And so I was a teacher at all of those levels. I've also been an administrator at different levels. I started my administrative career as an assistant principal at a high school and that in Michigan. And then as my boys moved up, it, um, my oldest son could have handled me being at the high schools as an administrator, but my youngest football player would not have done well. So because I was certified K-12, as they moved up, I moved down and was an elementary principal for many years, um, until most recently in the last, I'm going into my fifth year at the cabinet level, I've served as an assistant superintendent in Taylor Schools. Uh, I've also had the privilege when I was a principal, certainly in this position, I, I do not have the time to do that and I do miss it. I served as a professor, as an adjunct professor, part-time, teaching master-level classes in educational leadership. So my background certainly speaks to who I am. And again, your district is truly the destination district, being in the top 10 and in the Wayne Consortium and having so many things to be proud of, um, from academics right on through to, um, community and fiscal responsibility. It would be an absolute honor and a pleasure if I were able to serve as your leader.
Nice to meet you. Thank you for coming in. Uh, my name is Rachel Hilton. I'm a trustee on the board and I have been on it for six years. I have three sons who are in the district, two in middle school and one in high school. I'm an attorney. I also have a Bachelor's of Arts in English, so, but not in French, like your background. So, um, exactly. What is your definition of school culture and what is the superintendent's role in cultivating it?
So school culture is the heart and soul and the pulse of what you find in the school community. It really touches on every facet. It touches on the importance of academics. It touches on the importance of staff. It touches on the importance of, um, student-focused activities, whether they are athletics, extracurricular, the community piece and the outreach to business. It really is how Trenton Public Schools marries the actual Trenton, the city of Trenton community and, and what gets perpetuated and breathes in the hallways every day. As the superintendent, you really are the gatekeeper and the role model and ambassador for that culture. And so, you know, if you were to do a dipstick and a litmus test on any administrator right now during these pandemic times, you know, we're tired, you know, we're stressed, you know, we're overworked, we don't sleep at night and we're, because the target continues to move, we're perpetually trying to figure things out. But in terms of the keeper of the culture, those are the things that you hold in private because in the, in public, you have to be the solid rock for everyone that you're leading. You have to be strong, you have to be available, you have to be positive and you have to continue to perpetuate the culture that we espouse as a community.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Heather Lear. I'm the newest trustee on the school board. I was appointed in December. Thank you. I have two children in the district, a third grader at Headkey and a seventh grader at the middle school. And I am going to get you on to question number two. Please describe your leadership approach in developing an administrative team. What steps did you take to do so and what challenges did you encounter along the way?
So in terms of a style, um, I would say that it's a combination of being a servant leader and being collaborative in nature. And so my best example would be in, in my most recent position, when I first arrived in, in Taylor, um, very talented people, very talented group of, of people that I met, particularly on our administrative team. But what was interesting was that the focus was not, um, in leadership and instruction. It was very managerial. And so by no fault of anyone, so please don't think I'm poking holes, but just that's what we stumbled upon. And as I got to meet each one of them, because I really took the time to make sure that I met each one of the administrators to see where areas of strength were and then where were our areas of opportunity. And, and what was consistent throughout my conversation was that there was a real focus on, and not that these aren't important, but student behavior with colored hair or holes in jeans or things that were more managerial in nature. But as I was speaking with them, there was a real drive to be instructional leaders. And so that's where we actually came together, um, through workshop models, through individual conversations, through grade level conversations, really created opportunities to focus on students at the heart of what we did and, and make that the premise of our work. And so the mantra, and still today, you know, I can be touted as saying, well, hang on, let's stop for a second. Particularly in these COVID times, people are wanting to just hang on to the self first. And I'm like, ooh, these sound like adult decisions, let's back up and let's make sure that the students come at the forefront of what we're, we're deciding. And then we can take care of the people around them and then the people that surround them. And so truly, as a cabinet member, you're the last to eat, so to speak. But that was the mantra that we took. And so it was very exciting to be able to watch people grow and, and the growth that I have seen over the last, going into my fifth year, has been exponential. And so that really happened when we, um, established a coaching model where we have 12 teachers that were hired, they were interviewed and hired, and they are instructional coaches. So there's one coach for each building. So then we really created this curriculum team. And so that's really what leads what we do. And that's not the only focus, but it's the primary focus because that's what we come to school to do every day. And so the coaching model has just been a huge support for our administrators to have that curricular support and to have that professional development that perpetuates through the building. Because as a building administrator, as, as you know, you're being pulled in 18 different directions. And even if you want to be an instructional leader, there's always a crisis, there's always an incident, there's always a personnel issue or a student issue. And so you're pulled and it's tough to stay focused. So it's really great that we were able to anchor that coach with that principal. And so there's a fantastic relationship that starts there at the building level and then that perpetuates into, um, principals really being the, um, focus of, of the liaison between schools and the board office and then that liaison to the Board of Education. And so what's important to note is that we really try to build human capital. And so even though that's the core team, we make sure that teachers have an opportunity for leadership. We make sure that support staff has opportunities for leadership, even in terms of, of smaller projects. Voice and choice and collaboration are critical from students to parents to staff, right up on through to the Board of Education. So it circles back to that idea of community and culture. And that truly is what has perpetuated this leadership team that we've created. You're welcome. Thank you.
I actually get two questions because I'm also filling in for Sean Gerhardt, who is our, um, Vice President of the Board. And he is an architect with two children in the district and he's out of town for work. So this is a longer question, I'll repeat it twice. Discuss a time you established a vision or strategic plan for your district. What process was used for planning? How was the plan implemented and what was the result? So again, discuss a time you established a vision or strategic plan for your district. What process was used for planning? How was the plan implemented and what was the result?
So the plan that I'm most proud of, and there are a few, but the one that I'd like to share, um, that relates to this question would be that of a wall-to-wall academies approach. And so that really is at the high school level. And the approach was such that, um, you reach out to your community. Because as you can see, you have a very high achieving high school. What I think is really important for our kids is that we make sure that there's an opportunity for everybody at all levels, in all walks of life, in all areas. And so what we did is we polled our students to see where their areas of interest were. And we created four academies. One that's business oriented, one that's fine arts oriented, one's that seem oriented and one that's medically oriented. And so whether you're going into the workforce, whether you're going into the military, whether you're going into a two-year college program or a four-year college program, there's a career track for you to be able to focus your work and your energies. So from the student level, the students have an opportunity to choose coursework that counselors help them with, um, in a career academy of their interest. And so within that opportunity, we try to give our kids a sort of the upper edge. And so within that academy, they also have an opportunity for industry certification. On top of that, you reach out to the community and you work with business partners to see how they fit in. Because what happens is that i- in the world of education, we do our very best and we educate our kids and, and, and we pump out graduates hoping that we've done our job and that they meet the needs of our community. But the feedback that we were getting from our colleges and our universities and community business members was that there was a disconnect. And they, we were graduating thing, students, um, with characteristics that were perhaps missing or skills that were missing in terms of what they were looking for. So we went to a model schools conference and, um, by design to look at this model schools con- concept in terms of the career academies. And so we attended many sessions, but it made sure that we attended the Clearwater High School, um, session in, there in Florida. And we went to, it was in Nashville, Tennessee. And so we attended their session and then I was quite bold. And I said to the presenters afterwards, I said, wow, this is so impressive and this is exactly what we're looking to do. And I said, it sounds great in theory, but would you be open to us coming to visit? Because I'd really like to see students in action. I'd like to see teachers in action. I'd like to see staff in action. We walk the halls and, and really live it for ourselves. And so we visited the high school and, um, because of the relationship that I have with the teachers' union, we actually ended up bringing 18 people. We descended upon them with 18 people. And the teachers' union paid for half of, of the, um, members to go and then the district paid for half. But it certainly was a, a spirit of collaboration. So we walked the halls and we were just so impressed with these students who were driven and passionate and had a focus and had a direction. And when we interviewed them, even some, so in one of their medical students, there was a young man who thought he was going to be a paramedic. And when he finished, he said, you know, this really didn't work out to be what I wanted. He said, but boy, did I learn about responsibility and how to act in a crisis and how to take care of things. He said, I learned more about what I didn't want to do, but the skillset that I wanted to achieve. So it was just fascinating to talk to students. So we came back, rolled our sleeves up. I forged a relationship with Ford Next Generation Learning and SEMCA. And so as sort of a triad, we worked together and we're still in the throes of, of things. And, and COVID has certainly thrown a huge wrench into our work, so we're kind of at a standstill, but I'm hoping that we can pick up the ball and, and move forward again. Because what we have organized, once we can be back face-to-face, is that, um, our teachers work with our elective teachers. So our core teachers work with our elective teachers. And, um, within each one of those academies, we reach out to businesses. So the program that we have right now is that is a microunit. We have four different businesses that are ready to go with us. And so the teacher will sit down with the, the business partner and, because they're very busy for 20 minutes of, of a small session, the conversation will go something like, so what is it that you're looking for in your business? Where, if we were to graduate one of our students and place them in your organization, what are you looking for? And then in terms of a skillset, this is the unit that we're working on. What would you like to see developed within this unit that would ma- marry your business? Then the students would work on the unit. The business partner would come in and actually share one day in the life of what their organization looks like. The teachers are working on that unit together. So the English teacher is working with the elective teacher. And the kids have that opportunity within that unit to do interdisciplinary work and create a capstone experience. They have a field experience. They go out into the business to see, is this something that resonates with what they want to do? And then they present us as one of the summative evaluation pieces for their work. They, um, put together their capstone experience. And then what we've shared with the business partners is that they can sit in on the presentation because students present their capstone experience. And if there's one that really resonated with, with what was shared, uh, we'd be happy to share that for their business website to be able to use as, as a marketing tool and a, a piece of goodwill in terms of their efforts with the community. So it's exciting that, that our kids get to be involved in that kind of thing. And then, um, what I just witnessed in the hallway with my microphone and, and my, um, adjusting was that this is something that you already have brilliantly put in place and it has the makings of just growing in that nature. And so that's probably what I'm most proud of and, um, students are, are quite excited. Teachers are excited. We saw a huge shift, um, in the way teachers teach, in the way students are coming to school and learning. There was a shift in attendance. Um, and we've seen an excitement in the community piece. Ford Next Generation Learning helped us organize, um, community meetings. And we had onwards of, of 85 community members that were attending to help us create a portrait of a graduate and the types of characteristics that they were looking for in terms of the, um, types of students that we would be graduating and, and putting into the community.
This question relates to the pandemic and I've seen you in action related to the pandemic.
Doing one of these.
The pandemic has impacted education now and in the future. How will you manage the effects, including changes to education this year?
So that's a multifaceted question and so I'm going to try to condense it. First and foremost, you know, I, I piggyback on some of the answers I've already given in terms of leadership. And, and it takes a strong leader to be able to guide a school community. Because what I am seeing is even our, our brightest and our best are in uncharted territory and they're nervous and they're experiencing things that we could never even have imagined. And so it's really important as a leader to help create this flexible and nimble approach. And so that has to be done with technology. And so one of the things that I'm most proud of is, is when I first came to Taylor, we didn't even have Wi-Fi in some of our buildings. And, um, it certainly dovetailed in terms of my dissertation and my area of interest because that's what lit me up. And so my passion drove, you know, working with folks and collaborating to create this opportunity. But we, um, now have a one-to-one student-to-device, um, district ratio opportunity for our kids. And so this has allowed us to really help students and teachers. But the critical. But the critical piece with the pandemic is you don't just put a Chromebook in front of a student and say, "Okay, you're good to go." And you don't just put a laptop in front of teachers and say, "Good luck." So it certainly takes training and professional development and time and patience and grace to be able to support folks that are in uncharted territory. And when they are brand-new, some of our best teachers have never had this kind of opportunity. We have to be so patient with our teachers, and we have to support them and help them in terms of tech integration. Because my expertise is in curriculum and curriculum development, but as a teacher, when you first get into teaching, you're an instructor. Your area is pedagogy, not curriculum development. And so teachers are having to do everything. They're having to be social workers, and they're having to develop curriculum, and then they're having to figure out lessons that are going to be more engaging, that are tech-driven, and then they have to figure out how to integrate that technology and then learn a platform. And so that would be the instructional piece that's important. And now, put the next umbrella in terms of safety. And so all of that sounds fantastic, but you have to make sure that you have safety measures in place. And so, you know, I am up late at night trying to maintain all of the newest updates with the CDC and the Health Department and MDE, and I really try to stay unbiased. So when I watch the news, I make sure that I watch different news stations so that I'm getting a pulse on exactly what's going on nationally from a very objective standpoint. And so I try to keep all of that in mind to ensure that safety is critical. And I guess the last piece would be that communication piece. And it doesn't matter when we go back to, we're busy and we're on that hamster wheel, have to stop and slow down and make sure that we communicate and over-communicate and communicate again. Because silence sends a message in and of itself. And so even if you're communicating, that's one of the things that I found most recently in these last seven months. Even when we were communicating things like, "We're not quite sure yet, but want to keep you up to date with where we're at to this point and where we may be heading, depending on what phase we're in," I think was, in terms of feedback from staff and community members and parents, was a relief, because at least they were hearing something. And so I think that what I've learned most in all of this is to make sure that we are transparent and honest and humble and over-communicative. You're welcome.
I'm David French, I'm Secretary for the Board. I've been on the Board now for eight years. I've got a blended family, I've had six students come through Trenton Public Schools, and by design, we brought them to Trenton for the schools. In my daytime job, I work for FCA Fiat Chrysler Automotive as a material handling engineer. I get question five. Describe a time when you came up with a creative solution to a school-related problem, and what was the outcome?
So I'm going to go back to the coaching model. I know I scratched the surface of the coaching model, but when we looked at our test scores, we really saw some gaps. And so what was critical was that not only do we have to help students close that achievement gap, but I come back to that whole idea of supporting teachers. And so again, when we had this coaching model, by design, there is one coach per building. And in terms of my personality and approach, there's some non-negotiables and then lots of flexibility. So as we developed this coaching model, when you put anything in place, it's really important to do things with fidelity. So my one non-negotiable was this approach about the Plan Teach Debrief model. So when you're building human capital and you're thinking about coaching, we don't coach the most needy. The idea is that you coach your best of the best. So we started this three years ago, and so now we've had 12 people go through our program. It's changed the way we do our teaching. But we chose our best teachers. And at first, people were like, "Well, I don't need help." But it's not about needing help, it's really about building human capital and really stretching yourself to go to that next level. And so the non-negotiable with a Plan Teach Debrief model is that the teacher and the coach would meet, and it doesn't matter to me when they meet, they could meet on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, but you plan, you teach, and you debrief within a week. And so all of your decisions that you're making in terms of the planning are certainly encompassing of what the teacher wants to do in terms of pushing him or herself. It has to be student-driven, it has to be data-driven, and that the lesson has to meet the need in terms of what the data is saying. So then the beautiful part about the time that they teach, so they've done their planning, now they're into the teaching part. And so when they teach, it could be one of three things. It could be that the teacher's teaching and the coach is observing. It could be that the coach is teaching and the teacher's observing, or they could be team teaching. And as soon as they get into that dynamic and flow and dance, the beauty of having two highly skilled teachers in a classroom, working elbow-to-elbow with students when they're in that activity time, is brilliant. And then the debrief is probably the most important piece, because then they're compelled to get together and talk about what went well, what didn't go so well, what do we need to reevaluate, what do we need to do to meet the needs of our students? And then what does it say about the data? We had some targeted objectives? What does it say about the work that we've done? And it goes into this inquiry cycle. And so the beauty is that at first, there was some pushback, and so people were thinking, "Oh, are these spies? Is this going to affect my evaluation? How is this going to affect my performance?" And those, again, are some of the non-negotiables. The coach is not a spy, the coach does not tattle to the principal, so you really are in a risk-free environment to try on things that you might not necessarily be able to try on. And with technology, it doesn't matter how tech-savvy you are, undoubtedly, there are times where you go, you go to the clever touch, and you're thinking, "Right, this is working." Well, the beauty about having the, and then you panic, and you think, "I'm not going to do that again, because that didn't work, and I've got all these kids in front of me." But when you've got your coach, you just step aside, the coach goes in, helps out, you jump back in. It really created this level of comfort, that it was okay to fall down when it didn't actually go perfectly. You had support, and you had a partner to be able to do all of this development with. And so even though there was pushback, there's been this complete shift in year one before it was implemented, and we used title funds to do this. The principals were pushing back, saying, "Don't touch my money, don't touch my budget, this isn't going to be good." And I said, "Just please trust me." And it took massaging, and we got to that tipping point, because we started with 30% buy-in, and then by the end of the year, before we actually rolled it out, we were at 90% buy-in, which was amazing that the shift happened that quickly. And now, they'll say to me, "Oh, please, whatever you do, you can't take my coach. Please, we can't change this program." So that in and of itself, I've seen as a success. But the biggest success that I've seen is that when we go back to that data piece, even though our scores aren't where I want them to be, we've seen their student growth profiles certainly increase, and students are making huge gains. So we're not where we are, we're not where I want to be yet, but we're close, and we continue to fight the good fight. And so that's what I would be most proud of.
I'm Megan Drake. I am a mother of two, a first and second grader. I'm also a teacher, and I have question number six. Tell us about a long-term initiative you've led in curriculum development, and describe how you would provide leadership in curriculum for the district.
So let me share the alignment that we did with language arts. And so when I first came to the district and I did a tour of the district, and English literature is my passion, and English language arts is my passion, so of course, I'm looking for things. And as you're walking around getting tours, I'm looking to see what kind of materials are being used. And so I'm seeing all of the heavy hitter materials. Harvey and Goodvis, I'm seeing LLI kits, but I'm seeing different things in every building, and I'm not seeing consistency. So it's not that that's a bad thing, because all of the choices that were made were strong choices in terms of curriculum and supplemental materials, but there wasn't the consistency. And then that certainly, as I was thinking about my conversations with principals and looking at the data, spoke to that gap that we talked about in terms of the achievement gap. Because it's not just about student and student performance, you have to make sure that teachers have all of the right tools in place and that there's an alignment. And so when I actually, when I looked at your website, I was very impressed with how the curriculum is quite organized with all of the standards, transparent and quite aligned. And so that was our attempt in terms of language arts, and we have lots of work to do in our core areas. But to actually align a program and curriculum K-12 is quite a challenge, and that's certainly something that we did. We used journeys and collections as our curriculum basis. But on top of that, we used, and again, we're still in the beginning stages as we're massaging through this, but a workshop model. And so much like that Plan Teach Debrief model that I talked about that we model at the adult level, we model in terms of teaching in the student level. So in a workshop model, a mini lesson is really the rule of thumb, the number of minutes that a child is on the earth. So if you're in kindergarten, it's a five-minute mini lesson, and let's be honest, in September, you might get two and a half minutes. And then at a high school level, it's a 15- to 20-minute mini lesson. Then there's an activity time that students are engaged in, could be small group, could be individual, could be whole group, but it certainly supports the mission of the lesson. And then there's that metacognitive piece at the end, and that's the most critical piece. And I think that's the piece that teachers really struggle with, present company included, because you're always competing with the clock. So you need to make sure that you get that last 10 minutes of your lesson to make sure that kids have an opportunity to think about what they just tried on, and to actually articulate it and discuss it. And so we marry that with an accountable talk system, where students are expected to listen, to understand, and to speak their understanding and their truth. And so in that metacognitive piece, in that coming-together piece at the end, you can work with students to say, "And so what did you learn?" And you work knee-to-knee with so-and-so, "Tell me what so-and-so learned." And so in terms of higher-order thinking, not only did you have to articulate what you learned, but you also have to think about what your partner learned, and then say that out loud. So in terms of internalizing your learning, it really is a great way to be able to make sure that we have best practices in place for our teachers.
I'm Mike Hawkins, I've been on the Board for 13 years here. I have three boys in the district, high school, middle school, elementary school, and I've been with the police department here in the city for 19 years. And you mentioned competing with the clock. I'll let you know, I'm the last one on the first time round, and we have two more times around to go. So I have question seven here. If you were selected as superintendent, tell us how you make an impact on our school district in the first few months on the job.
So the first few months on the job is really important to form relationships. And what I've learned through my entire tenure is that you could be clever, and you could be hard-working, but if you don't have those strong relationships in place, if you don't have those connections made, it doesn't matter how clever or good you are at your job, you have to make those relationships. So I think it's going to be critical to make sure, if I was chosen, to be visible, to be available, to really get to know everyone in the district. And when I look at the size of this district, it's just perfect. It's a perfect place to land and really make a significant impact, because you would have the time by virtue of the size. I'm not saying that it wouldn't be a daunting task, but it's certainly doable and achievable to make those very strong connections with each individual. And so I would say that that's probably the most important piece, is not only to help people understand who I am, but take the time to be a listener. And it's truly in terms of active listening and intentional listening, and to listen to understand and not listen to speak to be heard. So the relationship piece would be the most important.
Question number eight. Most districts have had to make budget cuts. Tell us about the process you would use as our superintendent if we need to make cuts.
I had that situation happen when I first came to Taylor, and we were $4.5 million in deficit. And so at the cabinet level, we did some serious strategic planning, rolled up our sleeves, there were many, 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 many late nights. And then we took a real collaborative approach. And so when we talk about those leadership teams, we found leadership within each one of the bargaining units. And we had some real hard conversations about things that needed to be had. They weren't always well-received conversations in some ways, but we had to look at lean management, we had to look at some of our practices. And again, we have miles to go before we sleep, but we were able to make that shift. And we did have some support with the bond and millage that got passed, but also in terms of lean management and the collaborative effort that we took to really take a hard look at our budget. And so I'm proud to say that we are in the black five years later. And to the tune of, Kelly can tell us better than I can, but you know, the last I checked, we were in the four-million mark for where we are in terms of being in the black. So that doesn't happen by accident, it doesn't happen overnight. And even small things that I will say, and we go back to this leadership team that we created in terms of being instructional leaders with focus and purpose. One of my tasks is that I have to go through every one of the requisitions in our district. It's an interesting approach, but that's, it is what it is, and that's what I inherited. So I'm approving things for boilers and cement and curriculum, yes. So that's part of my task, is that I go through. But what it has done, you know, everything happens for a reason. It's forced me to really look at how we spend our money and where we spend our money. And so when I was looking at principals making choices, I'm like, "Why do you need 100 bottles of hand sanitizer?" And this was pre-COVID. But I'm thinking, like, why are you making those kind of choices? And you would think that it wouldn't have an impact, because we're talking about millions of dollars, but it did. Because I would sit down and have those harsh and kind but firm conversations about, "Talk to me about your purchases, I just need to understand." I'm not being critical, I just need to understand. And they were like, "Well, if I don't spend my budget, I'll lose it, right?" I'm like, "Oh, there's our first problem." So we really got into a spirit of people treating the school budget and the district budget as if it were their own. And we saw a huge shift in the way that we've done our practices. And so I would be most proud of that. I would marry that same approach in terms of a collaborative spirit, to be fiscally responsible. I'm frugal by nature, but not cheap. So if something needs to be purchased, then we find a way to make that happen. But I am fiscally-minded, that we're not going to spend to spend, and we're going to make sure that we do our research before we make any serious purchase.
To be a successful superintendent, you have to deal with a wide range of personalities. How do you handle this, and how do you do conflict resolution?
Well, I taught a class in conflict resolution, so from a textbook, I have all of the answers, but let me share with you what that looks like practically. So from a practical standpoint, again, I come back to that idea of listening, and it's really important to have an active listening stance. And I've done my best learning from the naysayers. Because it's very easy to espouse those who sound like you and think like you and behave like you, and that's who you cling to. But it's really important to make sure that you recognize all of the different personalities, and you recognize those that are a little bit disgruntled. Oftentimes, if you dig deep, you can ferret out what the real problem is, and it's usually never done in malice, it's out of genuine concern. So if you can lift that out and figure out what the real problem is, and then come to some happy medium, I think that's the best approach. Oftentimes, in my life, whether it's personal or professional, three things happen. We'll have a conversation, and I'll think, "Oh, my gosh, I didn't even think of that. That's brilliant, that's how we have to go." Or we'll have a conversation, and I'll think, "That's an interesting perspective, let me share mine, and can we find a happy medium, and this is why?" And then 10% of the time, as you know, at a board level, I'll say, "I know it doesn't make sense, you just have to trust me, there are behind-the-scenes situations that I'm not at liberty to discuss, but you just have to trust," and that goes back to that relationship piece that we talked about, "that it just has to be this way." And that's not often, but it is. But to come full circle about conflict resolution, it really is important to allow people to be heard and understood, and to have a voice in the situation. And if you let things fester, I think that that just creates toxicity. So it's really important to tackle those things upfront and head-on. Those aren't always easy and pleasant, but if it's done in the spirit of integrity and it's done with a pure heart, the results have always been favorable for me.
And my question is similar to what you just talked about. What is your philosophy of leadership as it relates to employees? Tell us what you have found to be the most rewarding aspect of leading others and the most challenging.
Feed the teachers? Or nobody eats? And so our teachers are at the forefront, so they are in the trenches, and I found that it's critical to make sure that we support them. We support them emotionally, professionally, with PD, with materials, with whatever supports they need to meet the needs of our students, because they're at the heart of what we do. But our teachers aren't our only group. We have to support our support staff, because those are the people that drive the bus to get our kids to school. Those are the people that are in the cafeteria to feed our kids. Our ATAs are supporting our teachers, our secretaries, our custodial staff, and our maintenance staff, our IT secretaries, our custodial staff, and our maintenance staff, our IT staff, the list goes on. It's really important that people feel like they are part of something bigger than themselves. And when we come back to that climate and culture piece, and we come back to that leadership piece, when you can establish and perpetuate that in a community that has this great vibe and excitement, and you make people feel part of that, and then make sure that there's a collaborative effort, that it's not just a top-down, we make decisions, you have to live with it. The best decisions are made with the voice and choice of the people that matter. And so to hear parent voice, to hear student voices, critical to hear student voice. It lit me up to have conversations with your Trenton students. I was just tickled. It's important to hear from all the constituents to be able to make that decision. And so I know as an employee, that's when I feel valued. I don't need a parade and rainbows and flowers, but I want to feel heard, and I want to feel part of something. I want to feel like we're all working together for the greater cause. And when we see students succeed, that's the true gift. And so to be able, as the leader, to be able to pull all of that together and make that happen is perfect. When we talk about challenges that you mentioned, sometimes the challenge is that there are people that don't buy into the vision. And so rather than get into this head-to-head situation, you just continue to go back to the mission. What is the mission? Why are we here? And what is it that we do? What we do? And what happens is if you, rather than get into this conflict, if you continue as a leader to perpetuate the good word, to focus on the student, to focus on the mission, the naysayers end up marginalized because they're on the sideline because everyone else is really excited about the work that we do. I've had private conversations with people in those situations and just said, boy, I'm not sure what's going on. Love for you to be a part of the solution, not the problem. How can I help you? Is there something that you need? Are you upset? Are you disgruntled? Those don't happen in public. Those certainly happen in private. But it's important to recognize and try to bring them along. And sometimes it doesn't happen right away. But I also have a good track record with that and have been able to win the naysayers over to come into the fold. There's never 100% accuracy, but my batting average is pretty good.
Next question. This is number 11. How will you approach negotiations with our bargaining units and describe your experience in working with labor relations?
So I'm looking at the time, and I'm going to be swift. And so I'm going to say that the approach would certainly be a win-win. And so it's really important, again, when we talk about this idea of conflict, that we don't enter into negotiations in the spirit of conflict. There are no winners and losers. We go back to who are we serving? We're serving these students. So how can, how, what is it in this contract that we can look at that meets those needs? And then what meets the needs of the bargaining unit? And then we look at the budget, and certainly with very serious conversation with the board and direction, conversation with cabinet, looking at budgets, what kind of wiggle room do we have? And often in these confining and budgetary times, sometimes there isn't a whole lot of wiggle room. But then I go back to my English language arts and my English Lit prowess. And so I tell myself to be proud of the fact that I can look at contract language, and it could be cost neutral, but it certainly can make a huge change in the way that work expectations are undergone. And so I would say that it's really about a collaborative effort, looking at the budget, being fiscally responsible, and looking at living within our means. And if we have to be cost neutral in terms of some of the language, certainly one of my areas of expertise. Yep. You're welcome.
Provide specific examples of how you contribute to or facilitate staff support and morale.
So leading by example, I think, is the best way to do that. And then to do so by communication. And so, you know, I went back to the comment that I made earlier. Are we tired? Absolutely. Are we exhausted? Absolutely. Are we stressed? Absolutely. But you're not going to see that when we walk into buildings, and you're not going to see that when we work with kids, and you're not going to see that when we're meeting with parents, because it's very easy to get sucked into that. And so there's always this positive presupposition about who we are and what we do and what message we continue to share as ambassadors of the district and as the superintendent, the prime ambassador of the district. And so it really is leading by example. And then that communication piece. I know when we were in shutdown mode, I was in charge of making sure that there was a biweekly email that went out just to share how many students we fed, what type of things were going on in terms of the enrichment activities that we were doing academically. And I got so much staff feedback. Thank you. It was just so nice to hear a voice and to get a message that this is what's going on. And so it really is about leading by example and communication.
Question 13. Please describe your involvement with bond issues or energy projects or other construction projects to improve facilities or developing a facilities plan.
So my experience would be at this level. And again, we worked with the different bargaining units. So we were able to pass a bond and a millage, and that hadn't happened in multi-digit years in Taylor. And so that was something that we celebrated vehemently. We were so excited that we were able to do that. But that didn't happen by accident or design, or not by design either. It was about that collaborative spirit, pulling all of the different bargaining units together, making sure that there was outreach into the community and perpetuating the good word, and making sure that our voters understood what it was they were voting for. What did that mean? What was it going to do for our students? What was it going to do for our community? What was it going to cost them? And so we were so excited and so proud. We had, we have some very old buildings, so there wasn't really no new construction. It was really a lot of technology and repair work. But certainly, in the spirit of transparency, trying to let our constituents know the who, the how, the why, and then what it did for our students.
If you were chosen for this position, what do you foresee would be the most significant challenges for you in leading our school district?
Well, first, I'll say I'm up for any challenge, and that's just been my personality my whole life. I think trying to manage COVID would be the biggest challenge. This is a dirty, dirty disease that we have not been able to figure out. And so I think the challenge would be to make sure that I continued in the very impressive vein that has been done thus far in terms of the communication piece to parents, in terms of making sure that all students and staff are safe, making sure that all PPE was in place, making sure that there was still a focus on not just the disease, but to continue to do what we do best, and that's teaching and learning, and then figuring out how to make sure that we celebrate that in these very difficult times. Keeping morale up, keeping up with communication with our community, with our parents, with our staff, with our students. Those sound like everyday things, but in this pandemic, certainly make sure that that's the emphasis and the focus so we can continue to be a thriving district.
Last question. What opportunities do you see to help our district improve student academic achievement for all students?
I looked at the test scores. I was so impressed that all of the test scores are above the state average, which is really impressive. But I go back to that whole idea of nudging and really trying to do that stretch goal for our students. And so that piece that I mentioned about the community piece and that wall-to-wall academies, the beauty is that's not just a high school situation. You start that college and career readiness focus right in kindergarten. And so you celebrate, and you have those project-based learning opportunities right from the early-on level. And then much like, you know, when we talked about that alignment with language arts K-12, you align this whole idea of what is it that you're interested in? What lights you up? What made you think? And how do you think? And you support that at a curriculum level. And then I certainly have relationships with the Trenton Rotary, and I have a knack to be able to make those business connections. And so I think that's what I would bring to the table, is how do we bring business into the school community? And how do we make those connections for our staff and our students so that we prepare them for their next level? And I think that that would be a rich dynamic. This is such an amazing community. And to really infuse those businesses by design and do it purposefully, I think could just take these test scores, not that those are the most important, but our student achievement to the next level.
How do you define the well-rounded student? If selected, how would you help our students become well-rounded and ready for post-secondary?
So I think I've spoken to that, but I'll just piggyback on it. Because the well-rounded student is really a student who has all of his or her needs met. So those needs are academic, those needs are social-emotional, those needs are some connection, some hook. What lights you up? In what extracurricular or athletic opportunity? And you have to look at all of that. And so not that academic achievement isn't important, so please don't misunderstand, but that's not the be-all, end-all. It's one piece of the puzzle. And so grades and test scores are critical in what we do, but we need to make sure that the school experience is whole and that students have a reason and a purpose. You know, we talked about having that sense of bigger self. How do we create that for students? And so we need to look at the whole child and make sure that we tap into their learning intelligence, the way that they learn, what they're interested in learning, and that we have a student voice to be able to drive the decision makings in terms of curricular offerings and opportunities. And so I go back to those industry certifications and connections with business and projects that light kids up that have sort of the benefactor feel, like what is it that we could do as a school community that would benefit our community in Trenton? What would, how would it benefit our nation? How could it benefit globally in terms of things that we could do and interest levels and projects that we would do?
Question 17, and I think this will be a quick one based on what you had discussed previously. What does staff development look like in your district? And how do you evaluate its effectiveness?
So the coaching model would certainly be one of the ways. We also look at, we have a school improvement curriculum coordinator group that works very closely with our principals, and our teachers have voice in terms of what they need. So the coaching model is one way, but we also listen to what teachers need. And so we listen to their feedback, and we create professional development opportunities that are either outsourced. We often do some of our own internal PD because of the expertise that we have in-house, but we also look at expertise out of house. And then we also have opportunities for teachers to go to different conferences. The most important thing to me with that, if we're going to spend that kind of money, and present company included, that you come back and you actually share the wealth of knowledge. You don't just go to the conference and think, that was great, and I'm in a really cool city, and I learned some really cool things. You have to come back and make sure that you share that because we're building human capital as a learning community. And so it's data-driven. And anytime that we're making decisions about professional development, whether it's in-house or out of house, we look at our data. And why would we go and spend that kind of money? To be able to learn what we're going to learn, it comes back to, does it support what our data says?
Forward with technology planning, and how would technology be integrated into instruction?
Didn't hear the last piece, I'm sorry.
How will you move the district forward with technology planning, and how would technology be integrated into instruction?
And so, again, I mentioned that right now, we're a one-to-one district. We've made sure that there's equity for all students and accessibility for all students. It's really important to have tech-integrated opportunities in terms of lesson design, but you have to create those opportunities for the teachers. And so that's through professional development. And it's through that outreach with parents. It's important, we're working on a professional development for parents because parents have become the new teachers in their living room and in their kitchen. And so it's important to make sure that we bring the parents up to speed as well. And so we'd look at budget, we'd look at need, we'd look at best practice, and it would be done in a collaborative spirit where there would be voice and choice from all constituents to make sure that what we purchased and what we put in place was appropriate and effective.
Question 19. During the input sessions, our stakeholders told us they would like a superintendent who is highly visible and part of the community. What does this mean to you?
When we talk about investigating the district and how it resonates with me, that's who I am. And so that's part of my social makeup, is that I like to be visible, and I like to be at community events. It did not break my heart that you have 14 years of hockey championship, because I'm the daughter of a junior Red Wing. So before Vietnam broke out, he was on the, we just missed it by a war. We could have, could have been a different kind of family. But all jokes aside, I love to be at events, whether they be plays, or musicals, or athletics, pancake breakfast, anything that involves the community. Really, the school community is what makes the outer community a buzz and a go. And that's just my personality, to be involved and visible in everything, classrooms and hallways included.
All right. Define the role of the board and the role of the superintendent. This is a little bit long, so I'll repeat it. How would you keep the board informed regarding legislative issues and district-related issues? What would you do to keep the board and superintendent relationship healthy?
So I was most impressed when I looked at your board docs and your board minutes and your board agendas in terms of the systemic and systematic way that you operate. And so clearly, the board's role is one of governance, and the superintendent's role is one that makes appeal to the board and makes recommendation. And so that communication piece is really, because communication is one of my areas of strength, it would be, what does the board need? So I would be adept and nimble to whatever the board would need. So if it's in a Friday update, if it's in a workshop, if you're texters, and that's how you want your information disseminated, I would work to serve you, because that's my role, is to serve you. And so it would be at the board's will. In terms of communication, I hope that you've seen in my answers that I stay very up on legislative issues, health issues. And so I would share those in a manner in which you would find best. If you're clearly all very busy professionals, if you want that in a synthesized, bulleted form so that you can do a quick cursory to say, okay, this is what's up, and this is what we need to focus on, I'm happy to do that. But writing and communication are my areas of strength, and I'm at the will of the board to be able to make that happen.
Last question I have, 21. How would you create an atmosphere that celebrates diversity in both staff and students?
So it's important, when we're celebrating diversity, it's really important to make sure that we understand the diversity that we have within our community. And then it's important to make sure that we celebrate that in a collaborative spirit. And so when I've seen the work that you've done with Ginny Winters, for example, she's one of my heroines at RISA in terms of the climate culture piece, I was so excited to see that. She really puts people through the wringer, if you will, but in a positive way, to do some soul-searching about what your biases may be that you didn't think you had. And so it's really important to help people grow as individuals, because when you grow as an individual, you grow as a teacher, you grow as a leader, you grow as a person. And so it's important to recognize the diversity, but it's also important to recognize what we don't have that's diverse. And how do we shift that growth mindset into creating that opportunity for people to understand what diversity is, how to recognize it, how to celebrate it, and how to make sure that you're not inadvertently offensive. And so looking at our community at large, and then looking at the community outside of our community to really teach our students, because we're role models for our students, and we do what, we practice what we preach, is that we want to make sure that we're inclusive, that we're accepting, and that we recognize and celebrate each other's differences. I think right now, in terms of our political times, there couldn't be a better way, because it's so polarized, to really look at both sides and recognize that it's okay for us to differ. It's not okay for us to be rude and indignant and mudslinging, that we just have to respect where each other is and be listeners to understand where people are coming from.
Thank you. And that concludes all of our formal questions. We want to thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for applying. And I just want to give you a minute, if there's any closing remarks that you have, anything maybe you wanted to bring to our attention or touch on that you haven't in the previous dialogue?
So when I think about the superintendency, and I think about leadership, it really comes down to passion, timing, and fit. And in terms of passion, I hope you've seen the passion that I have for teaching and learning and for student advocacy, and the thrill that I get when students succeed at our hands and collectively at our hands. In terms of the timing, I feel like I have run the marathon. I've done the practice. I come to you as a K-12 teacher, a K-12 administrator, with going on five years of cabinet experience. So I bring that cabinet-level experience that as a principal, like, you know, you think you know things, and then you get into a cabinet level, and you think, wow, I didn't know any of that. So coming with that experience, I think I'm ready and I'm prepared. And so the timing is right. My family is in a situation where they're pretty independent, so I'm not as needed a mom as I once was with two boys. And the timing of this, it couldn't be more perfect. And in terms of fit, again, I come back to everything that you stay. And in terms of fit, again, I come back to everything that you stand for resonates with who I am. There's pride, right down to the moms in your garden when I was sitting outside waiting, to the way you do your your teaching and learning, to the way that you treat your community, to the way that you communicate. It's it's everything that I espouse and everything I stand for. So the fit to me would just be perfect and as a destination district, a truly a dream come true. So I just want you to know that you would not be disappointed if I was chosen as your superintendent. And it's been an honor and a privilege today to share my situation with you.
Welcome back, everybody. We will now turn the conversation over to Dr. Rod Green, who will lead us through our analysis of the candidates that we've interviewed.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I wanted to say good job on everything. I think it went smoothly. I know it's a little tricky with all the technology and everything like that, but I felt like the candidates were comfortable and you seemed comfortable and the questions went well. The timing was pretty good, so I thought all of it went well. So what I'd like to do to start things off, a couple of things. First thing would be just to have a little brief conversation about each candidate. So I want to just kind of go in order, as you will recall. So I'm looking for just any comments from the board, mainly just things that you noticed or things that you liked. And so starting with our first candidate, which was Kevin Brock. So any comments that you'd like to make on Kevin? And by the way, I'll tell the audience that's watching, the board has received the feedback from the audience, so we received feedback and so they've read that. They have their own notes, and so we're just taking a moment to review the candidates. So starting with Kevin Brock, anyone would like to start off? I know your names, so I can call on people.
I thought he was very approachable. I thought he had good answers for a lot of our questions. I appreciated that he was an experienced assistant superintendent. He seemed to wear a lot of different hats in that role as the chief negotiator in his district with the union. I thought he had good understanding of grants, which I think is important, and I think he was well-educated based on his resume. Those would be my comments.
Anyone else? Rachel?
I also really thought he was a strong candidate. I appreciated his answers were very specific in terms of actual programs that he's implemented and things like that. And one thing that really stood out as a strength to me was that he had experience in human resources as well as curriculum, but human resources is big because we don't have a human resources director in our district, so that was good. And I also really liked his answers with respect to being culturally sensitive and bringing that. He's from a larger, more diverse district, and I thought that was a strength as well.
Okay. Anyone else have a comment?
I kind of agree on him. I did like his interview. I thought he was very relaxed. He did do his homework on the district. I also liked the HR piece that he had. One answer that I really liked was, I can't remember the question, but I wrote the answer down, was he said he would bring more support services, which I think we as a board have been asking for, talking about at least for quite a while, so I think he identified that after looking and doing his homework. So there are a few things I liked about him.
Okay. Anyone else? Let's move on to the second candidate, and that was Matt Mull. Comments on Matt?
You know what I liked about Matt right away was he just said, you know, take and just look at me right now, forget titles, and just hear what I have to say. And I think that that was very honest, and certainly, you know, we do look at everything that they've accomplished in their work experience, and I do think he spoke above his work experience clearly. You know, he had a wealth of knowledge on many different topic areas. So I was pleasantly surprised by that opening. I think that was a very open and honest way to start the interview, so thank you.
I'd like to echo that same statement. I think I wrote down half of the things he said. I just kept thinking, I love this approach to telling us how to listen to him because his knowledge kind of superseded his experience. I appreciated a lot of his answers, and he was very, seemed approachable for staff, seemed approachable for parents, and I really loved some of the things about, you know, seven habits and all of his vast experiences from different areas just kind of led me to believe that he would come to the table with a lot of different experiences from different areas and different fields.
Okay. Mike?
I think one of the things that makes him a popular candidate, not with just the board, but with people who may have been watching, and you can see it by some of the feedback we read, was that he's one person that does live in town in the visible part with the stakeholders that we talked about. What's your role? What do you see as a role? He is invested in the community. He's involved in the community, and I think that's very important, and he's one of the top ones in that, in that he resides here in town as well.
Okay. Yes, Rachel?
I also thought he knocked it out of the park with his interview. I really liked his answers with regard to special education, trying to move students to a less restrictive environment and bring down the discipline level in students. That was just a phenomenal answer to me, so I really liked that.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with every, I really, I thought he seemed very likable. I think he seemed like someone that you would want to go up to and talk to at a football game and say, hey, you know, thanks for doing whatever he may have done. He just really seems like someone you'd want to go talk to, and I feel like our community needs someone like that. That kind of energy is, it was really positive, and I love that he has kids in the district and he lives in the district, and when he mentioned wanting to give his son his diploma, I mean, I get that, so.
Okay. Very good. Anything else? Let's go to, the third candidate was Doug, Doug Misner, Metzner, Metzner. I'm saying that.
Spencer.
Spencer, thank you. Doug, comments on Doug? Yeah.
Mr. Metzner, I think his passion really showed through. I think he kind of wears his heart on his sleeve, and I've noticed that over the time that he's been doing the interim work. I think he loves Trenton. I think he's stable. He's been here. He's been involved in all the buildings. He's had a lot of different roles. Just on a personal observation, I've seen him, just with where I live, outside of Anderson, directing traffic in a suit in snow and rain and sleet and wind, so I know he really cares about our district and our children.
Okay.
All echoes of the same comments. Some of the notes I just wrote down were the passion and compassion that he showed there, and like you said, being in every building, every position that he's held there. I do think it's tough for somebody who we know already to try and tell us who he is, so while he has a leg up on knowing what's inside the district, trying to explain to us who he is, we already know who he is, so the interview may be a little odd at times for somebody like that, but I thought he did a great job, and the passion was the word I wrote numerous times on there, on what he had to say.
I would like to echo that same, all those points, 27 years at Trenton as well in all different aspects. And I was thinking in, after the interview session yesterday, that I think there were so many, I was thinking there were opportunities he missed to tell us what he does that we already knew, and then I thought possibly he didn't tell us because we already knew and was trying to think of new things we wouldn't have observed. So I think that might have been difficult for him to do, having to think of new things when we've been seeing other things that he's been doing.
Good. David?
Yeah, I would, I would just follow that line. I'd echo all those same things, and I do think that it was somewhat of a disadvantage for him because we do know him, and I think he may have left some things out that we know about, you know? But his passion, you know, Mr. Hawkins hit it, for me anyway, that his passion starts right from the beginning, you know? He certainly knows the district and he knows our students. So I think his commitment is evident, you know, and I think that's something that's really important, and I think that that was a good presentation by him in that respect.
Okay. Anyone else? Heather?
The fact that he walked in with his first pay stub from Trenton Schools from '94. I mean, who still has that besides someone who truly loves their job? And how many times did he say, "I love kids" during his interview? I mean, it's evident that it's genuine, and not that the other candidates weren't, but there was just something different about the way he approached it and the way he approaches it on a daily basis.
Yeah, I wonder how much that was for, did he say?
No, he didn't.
That might be fun to see. Yeah, Rachel?
And I want to echo what other people said. All three of my children have had him as a principal, and I know that he just is so dedicated to children. He's, with my own children, has been so sensitive to them in different situations, draws children in, so I really appreciate that about him. He's very emotional in a way. I don't mean that as a weakness. I mean, he does wear his heart on his sleeve. I think some of his answers were not as specific as I would have liked in some ways, but I wonder again also if that's part of him just thinking that we already knew some of the things, so.
Okay. All right, so then tonight we had a couple more, so how about start with Nelson Henry? Anyone on Nelson?
I'll start with that if you want. I thought he was an excellent speaker. I thought he was, is very engaging. I did like that. He did have a lot of experience. He did do his homework on the district in almost every way possible, had answers for everything. There were a few things, bound questions, academic achievement, technology, I thought we may have glossed over. There could have been maybe more substance to that, but he can talk, that is for sure, and very engaging and interesting to listen to.
Okay.
I'll add, yeah, I agree, very, very engaging, and I think that's a good quality in a leader. I wasn't, you know, I was very actively engaged while he was speaking. I think he comes with the depth of knowledge and background, and also, again, kind of like diverse background coming from different places. And I know that while we're praising longevity, I also do praise the fact that somebody can go through different places and still be able to fit in and work through, you know, changes in different areas, so I thought, I thought he, I really was actively listening and very excited about some of the things. So I thought, I thought he, I really was actively listening and very excited about some of the things that he proposed.
Anyone else? Comments? Yeah, Rachel?
I like talking about everyone, but I agree that he was just a very engaging speaker. I was riveted while he, while he talked. One thing that stood out to me is his answer concerning the fact that he had been a union president as a teacher and how he navigated budget cuts through that. And I think that would buy him some credibility with the union. It sounds like he's fairly experienced in labor relations, and to me, that's such an important component of the superintendentship.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to make a couple of comments. When I was brought in as a consultant at Inkster Schools, when they were going through some severe financial hard times and ultimately dissolved the district, and the personality and the enthusiasm that you saw here today was exactly what we saw there even during the most difficult and challenging times. And I also got to see firsthand the academy that he was part of developing with these students who came from some pretty tough backgrounds, getting college credit and graduating with associate's degrees. And I was extremely impressed by his work with that program.
Thank you. Okay, and then our last candidate, Mary Ann?
I guess I'll start again since we've been going this route. She had a very tough time of following that speaker, anybody to come in. That was tough to follow Nelson. But she does have a wealth of experience. She does have her doctorate. She's been a teacher and administrator at all levels, which I thought was important. She has some background in curriculum development, which I know people had talked about at the beginning was beneficial. And again, she did her homework and had the numbers and the scores as well, so I did appreciate that.
Okay. Others? Rachel?
I really also value her central office experience. I think that's hard to overlook, how important that is going to be, especially right now with the pandemic and whatever funding challenges are coming our district's way. I also really liked her answer about the four learning communities that she brought to Taylor. That was innovative and interesting, yeah.
Good. Anyone else?
I just have a couple of comments. I'm actually working with her now at Taylor. And a couple of things, she was, when the pandemic hit, she was solid as a rock. She was composed. People were panicking. I mean, I was out there the day that Ohio closed all their schools, and people were running around like crazy. And she just maintained a calm and a very focused leadership through the whole process. And I really appreciated that about her. I just, you know, as she was going through her answers, it all came back to students, it came back to education, it came back to curriculum, and it came back to teachers, and that's really why we're here. And so I thought that that focus is very important. And I also appreciate the fact that she has a doctorate. I know that I've heard through the community that that's something that people do value for a superintendent.
Very good. Okay, so some good comments and very interesting, different people, of course. And so what I kind of wanted you to think about now is looking at your own notes and the feedback that you've gotten, plus listening to your fellow board members, is are you ready to kind of pare it down a little bit? And so generally, at this moment, I would not ask you to rank the candidates, but I would ask you, do you want to see some people for a second round? You know, who would you like to see back? So you can't, you can't have all five back because we can only pick one, right? So you, I would say you could either pick one to come back, you could pick two to come back, or you could pick three to come back. And so I'm interested if you would write down if you're ready, or if there needs to be more discussion, I would entertain more comments. But if you're ready to write down your top one, two, or three with no ranking, I would like to just kind of walk around and see what you're thinking, if you don't mind. Ask you to say these names out loud, of course, right? So you can put down one or two, or if you really wanted to see three, you could do three as well. Okay, so you've all got your answers, so I guess I wouldn't mind just going around. If you, you want to go in alphabetical, or you just like to go clockwise, counterclockwise? Who wants to start? We can do whatever you want. And what I'd like you to do is just list your candidates. No rankings at this point, just the ones that you think you might want to see in a second round. I'll call in, Michael. Yep.
Actually, I'll go in order of how they, how they went. After looking at a lot of things, I tried to understand what do people on the community, what did they say as opposed to what do we need right now in the district? Where are we strong? And what do we need? What have we been lacking? And all these people bring different aspects, I think, to this position, would bring different aspects to our district. I'm not opposed to additional or other people, but the two people that I had written down in order of their interviews were Kevin Brock and Doug Mensner.
I honestly couldn't narrow it down to less than three, so I have Matt Mull, Doug Mensner, Nelson Henry in order of how they were interviewed.
Okay, so say that again, you had Matt?
Matt. Yes.
Okay, David?
Kevin Brock and Doug Mensner.
I, I liked them all, but I had to narrow it down to three. I had Doug Mensner, I had Nelson Henry, and I had Mary Ann Sear.
Okay.
Doug Mensner and Matt Mull.
This is so difficult. I also like them all. I really hate to narrow it down. I think my two top would be Kevin Brock and Doug Mensner.
So just to give you the totals on what you came up with here.
We had three that talked about Brock, Kevin Brock, six for Mensner, two for Mull, two for Henry, and one for Seer. So the question is, you know, if I, if I said to you, you have to narrow it to two, if you had to narrow it to two, you know, what would you, what would you answer? I'd be interested in that. If you, you know, we can only hire one, so obviously, you know, Doug has six, six votes to come back, of course. That's, that's good. We have one with three, which is Brock, and then we have two with two, which is Mull and Henry. So I don't know if it would change anything if I said, hey, you got to narrow it to two. What would, what would you do if you had to narrow it to two? Who all picked three? There was several of you picked three, right? Oh, just two. Two people that picked three. So Megan and Kelly. So Kelly, you had, your three were?
So I again, I had Doug Mensner, I had Nelson Henry and Mary Ann Sear. So given what I know right now, I would narrow it down to Doug Mensner and Nelson Henry.
Okay. And Megan, you had three and you were?
Oh wait, no, that would change it. I was going to say, oh no, I was going to say Doug Mensner and Matt Mull. So it would change, it wouldn't change anything.
Well, that would, that would take Nelson Henry away. That would take one from Nelson, correct?
Your third one was Nelson?
Oh, okay, I get it, yeah, okay.
Okay. So, so we've only, we've got three for Brock and six for Mensner. So, and then you've got, you're tied with two each for Mull and Henry. So is there any, any discussion about how you think that would go? Do you want to try to bring back three, or you just want to try to bring back two? The top two are Mensner and Brock. Thoughts?
It's tough. I mean, you look at them all and you think, they'd be all great to have in this district. You have certain roles somewhere, you know, and it's tough to.
I know, I'm like, can we create an HR position? Yeah, I think.
They're all great candidates.
Well, I think part of this is a process, right? So we did five interviews, and collectively as a board, we can narrow it down to two candidates to move forward to another round easily because we've got, you know, a majority leaning for that. And I would be supportive of doing that just because I think if we add the third one in, I don't know that it's going to really benefit that third candidate to return. You know what I mean? I respect their time as well.
Right.
Just my opinion.
And I think with the change of down to two, it did eliminate the one, so it would have been two for Mull and one for Henry, anyway, when we went two, two.
Right, and none for Seer then, if that was, if that was what we said. So yeah, the top, the top two are Mensner and Brock with six and three. You know, Mull has two, and then Henry has one, if you narrowed it like we said. So, so other comments, thoughts on that? I can talk to you, why don't we mull on that for a second? Let me talk to you a little bit about a second round. If you went to a second round, so a lot of times what you like to do maybe in a second round is start with the presentation instead of an opening statement. So what I've been doing lately has been, nothing really with a PowerPoint or anything, but more of a, you know, 90-day plan, like what would you do in your first 90 days, kind of a thing? What would be your plan to get going? Now, I know with one of the candidates, he's already been in the position, so I'm not sure if that fits for that, if you thought that that would still fit or not. It's a common thing for superintendents to present a 90-day plan. So, and then in terms of getting questions, so that's one question. So then the other thing is, what else do you want to know from the candidates? So if you did narrow it to two, you know, and this was what Mike was asking me earlier, is how do we get the questions for the second round? Well, it comes from you. I need to know from you, what do you want to know from these two candidates? So each of you sends me a couple of questions, and then that's where we develop the questions from. For what, and it can be from the notes from the first interview, or it could be something, you know, that you're just curious about, you just want to know. And so then, the other thing that we do different in the second round is follow-up questions a little more. There's a little more follow-up or discussion sometimes. So Mike asks a question, and Megan says, hey, well, explain more about that. So you can, you can do a little more interacting that way in the second round. And also, we would ask the candidates to come prepared to ask at least one question of the board towards the end of the interview. So we want to hear a little bit of what their concern might be or their interest might be in asking a question of the board. So that's, that's kind of the differences of the interview. It's just another chance to take a look at people and, you know, kind of try to keep narrowing it. Yes?
Can I ask the, maybe it's a stupid question here. Obviously, we have six of us here, there are seven of us on the board. If we have three votes for someone, is it normal to take that back? Or two, as we were talking for, for a second round of interviews? If everybody had one person, same person?
It's, I mean, you could, you could, you know, ask the question of, if you ranked the candidates, what would your ranking be? You know, so if I asked you to rank them now, then if I've got a one and a two, and everybody's got the same one, then, then I go further and say, okay, is this, is this what, is really where you're at on this? Do you not need to see two candidates? Do you not need to see if everyone had the same number one? Which I don't know at this point because we haven't ranked them yet. So we could ask that question if that's what you wanted to do. If people felt like the ranking was the same.
Well, we don't know if the rankings.
We don't know.
But before we get there, before we start to come up with questions, we want to make sure it is or isn't, I would think, to get that step process correct. Because if they are all the same, then do we really need to waste people's time? If they're not, I think that's time well spent on talking to the candidates. That's just my opinion.
Definitely. Well, with having only three on the second candidate, I would be interested more if it was six and four, you know. But obviously, it was split, you know, so, so the.
Did he send anything to you?
Oh, she's checking her phone.
I know he was looking at feedback, but I don't know if he had a chance to watch interviews, so it wouldn't be fair if he didn't.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so yeah, I mean, it's certainly up to the majority if we want to do two or not. So I would be, I guess, if you wanted to do a ranking, if you thought you were ready to do a ranking, I would be interested in seeing that if people felt like that was something they wanted to do. But we're not, we're not really talking about a ranking. But do you want to do a ranking, or do you just want to just go forward with a second round?
I personally would like to go forward with a second round. I'd like to ask some follow-up questions, and that's just my view.
Anyone else?
I guess I'd want to know more what we're going to have for follow-up questions. I guess that's the area that kind of, you know, these were, these were 21 pretty in-depth questions to start, so I don't know how we narrow that. I like the idea of the presentation, a piece of homework. I don't know if that's equally fair for someone that's in the district that knows us versus someone that isn't, you know what I mean? Like, it's almost like putting out a proposal versus an actual plan. So I don't know if that's a good case study for us to see. Other than we would see someone's capability of putting together a plan on a fictitious district, right? Because they wouldn't be planning specifically for Trenton.
Well, they would be. It's a, it's an entry plan, so you do envision yourself as, okay, I'm starting here on December 1st, or October 1st, or whatever it is, and what would I do in my first 90 days? So there's definitely some things that you should be doing as an incoming superintendent. And some of them said a little bit of that, because we asked a little bit of a question, and I can't remember who asked it, but it's the question of, what impact would you make in the first few months?
That was mine, but nobody really dealt into much other than dealing with the pandemic, getting back to school. That was pretty much the gist of the question. If nobody expanded, which I was hoping they would expand more, but not, one single candidate did.
So that's, that's, that's really, this presentation would be trying to expand that, and what really would you do in 90 days? So the types of things that you look at as a, as a new superintendent. So it should be, it shouldn't be fictitious, really. It should, and really, you'll see similarities between both. But maybe from Doug's point of view, he would be saying, hey, I've done some of these things already, but maybe he hasn't.
My concern?
No, go ahead.
I was going to say, my concern is when I look at this and I really think about it now, I'm realizing that second person on the list isn't even a person I picked. So then, when you break that down, and then there's only two people, how many other people are in that boat? And how many other people already have chosen their favorite out of the two?
That was my point.
Because if it's not, the second one isn't your favorite, then it's already a lead for the other person.
The three people that voted for Brock were the same ones. It was Brock Mensner, Brock Mensner, Brock Mensner. So the other three people did not have him on, so.
Yeah, so that would be automatic.
Assuming he would be the one on their pick, so it's three, zero at that point. Did the others have him one? Well, then are we talking four, two, five, one, six? So are we wasting our time? That's the only thing I'm saying, because.
It would have to be three back at least if you weren't doing it that way, or nor not do it again. You get what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do.
And to the idea of the plan, which again, I think that's a great idea if it was a normal, non-pandemic time. But I think that everyone's going to have the same fictitious pandemic plan, right? Because we don't know, we don't know what we're going to be doing as of October 1st ourselves. I mean, we could have a plan, and it doesn't go there. So I think most of the plans that they're going to write are really going to revolve around, how do you get kids back to face-to-face? How do you, how do you continue to educate our children in the best possible terms that we can provide? So, and that's where I.
Would we be able to say, give us the plan and only spend about a certain amount of minutes on pandemic-worthy issues?
If pandemic wasn't here, what would you do your first 90 days? Is that kind of a plan?
I know that sounds bad.
Yeah, that might be their dream plan.
But we still do want to hear what the pandemic plan is. But I don't want it to be the entire plan because the district will survive after the pandemic.
Right, right.
Rod, if they've both been through the superintendent academy or Inspire Superintendent Academy, have the education specialists, is that 90-day plan going to be pretty much the same? Is that something they teach them and it's going to be?
You know, there's books written on it, of course, and I have done presentations on it. There's components to it that you're looking for and yes, you know, there should be, those components should be in there. Every once in a while, you'll see something that's a little bit off with it, but usually, you know, the plan is, you know, talking to people is one part of it and then, you know, looking at contracts and looking at the audit and going through the budget. I mean, there's part, as a new person coming in, there's things that you should be doing. And, you know, one of them is getting along with the board, of course, but there's all these other components of the job. And so, you're just kind of looking for that, you know, that flavor of people understanding that. But I don't disagree with David on, you know, it could be a moot point because everyone is upset right now. I mean, there's no doubt that everything that we're dealing with right now is about the pandemic, so I definitely feel it out there for sure. So, but I'm interested in Megan's comment about, you know, if that's not even one of my ones, you know, how does that really relate to the thing? So, I am interested in comments from the board in regard to ranking because if everyone is ranking one candidate above the other one, I would be interested in that. It's not to say you can't have a second round and pursue one candidate. Do you see what I mean? If there's follow-up questions that people want to ask, you could do that. But like Mike is saying, it's like, oh, it's a little bit of a moot point, you know, we don't need to do that. But I have in a couple of places gotten to where the board really liked one person over all of them and so they wanted to have that person come back for the second round. That's possible, too. I mean, you could do that. There's a lot of, it's all art, not science, you know? So, there's a lot of feel for what you really want. I mean, ultimately, it's the board's decision of who you want to be your next superintendent and you don't have to really mess around if you already really know who that person is. You know, I would say that as well. So, there's nothing wrong with that. Kelly?
I wouldn't be opposed to ranking them right now and maybe having you walk through like you did and see where we're at.
I'm open if that's.
If that's what the board wants.
What's the best way we want to do it? Right now?
Just circle, circle your one and I'm going to walk around and see what it looks like.
We circle our one, face them.
Circle the one of the two that would have left.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's mostly, I would say, mostly one person. So, we could have that discussion. I think that that would be appropriate if that's what, if people want to pursue that one person, we could have the discussion now and decide, I mean, go forward with it. So, so five people had one candidate as number one and then one person had the second candidate as number one. So, do you want to?
Open conversation, start talking about it?
Yeah.
Kelly, I don't know, you want to start or you want to finish or what do you?
I'll start. I mean, I have Doug Minser as my number one choice out of the two that we have been discussing and, you know, I think seeing what he's done during this time when he was thrown into this position, just the way he embraced it, the passion he embraced it with, I think the fact that he included Stephanie as his partner in that process when she really was his competition in the beginning spoke a lot to his character and about putting the needs of the district before his own personal gain. I really had a lot of respect for that and he would, based on where we are today, he would get my vote.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'll go. I agree. I think that, you know, it's important that we looked externally and I think we have some really outstanding candidates that we, I wish I could bottle some of this energy and bring it in here and set it in the office next to the next superintendent, no matter who they are, and say, here's your idea well. Here's your, when you're reaching and you're running out of stuff, here's the stuff you can just draw out of because there's some amazing things that we heard in the last five, these five interviews and, you know, but I do think, you know, Mr. Minser is in the role and he's doing a really good job with a difficult time for this district. And I'm not sure that any of the other candidates are going to give us that much more of a lift right now from what we have going on internally. And I think that's why my candidate is Mr. Minser right now.
I'll go next. When we put it the way of narrowing it down to just the two that we had picked since that second person also wasn't even on my top three, for me, that was kind of, I mean, it kind of laid it out easier for me to just, you know, circle that. If Doug was in my top three and the fourth person, I wouldn't have put on the list. So, that's where I was at.
If we're going in order here, I echo Kelly's sentiment. First off, I liked all the candidates and I think Mr. Brock was excellent as well. Doug has shown he could do the job, but more importantly, he's shown he could work with Stephanie in the central office and with Gail. And I know that was a concern for us as a board, for the community. And I just think that that teamwork and that collaboration, the word they've used over and over is what I think would be best suited for our district right now. They bring different skill sets, very competent. And I think, I don't think I've seen that, that passion and compassion from somebody interviewing about kids in a long time. And I know everybody was passionate, but there was true passion there and I'm confident he's not going to let the district fail and he knows it better than anybody else on this list. And I think that's, that's why I selected him.
Rachel?
So, I have nothing but good things to say about Mr. Minser as well. I am the one who would have liked to have seen more interviews, so I'll, and it's nothing, it's not a knock against Mr. Minser at all. It's, I feel that Trenton could benefit from some outside experience. I feel like sometimes we have a tendency to be a bit insular where we don't get ideas from other sources and we have one way. And I think that Mr. Brock has such a breadth of experience that I would like to see him come back. And I'm not necessarily saying I would choose him over Mr. Minser, but I wouldn't like to end the interview process tonight, I guess, is my perspective.
I get it. I know what you're saying. But there is, there is some point, too, to the comment that's like, hey, if we're there, you know? So, that's, that's the thought, too. But let me ask you this, Rachel. I'll put you on the spot for a second. If the majority of the board felt that Doug, I mean, you would support that?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Heather?
I think that our district right now, we, we need some stability and I think that Doug has demonstrated that through his, the way he has handled everything as an interim. And I do feel that that kind of does give him a little bit of an unfair advantage against the people that have interviewed and they were all outstanding candidates. I did notice in their letters for their resumes, Mr. Brock and Mr. Minser were the only two out of 17 that actually said in their letter, I love kids. It was not a hit against anyone else and there were other great things that were said, but those were something that stood out to me. And when Mr. Minser came in and spoke yesterday, just in his intro speech, he had me. He just, the way he talked, his charisma, it just, he was beaming. He was so happy to be here. He was so happy to have that opportunity. He was so proud to have come as far as he had with our district and to say he's nowhere near ready to retire, he's, he's all in. I'd like to see what he can do for us. I'd love to give him a chance.
Well, it feels to me like, you know, without Mr. Gerhart being here, it feels like the majority of the board really has centered in on one candidate and I think it would behoove the board to, to move in that direction. That's my opinion from being a consultant and listening to all of this. So, if that's really the pleasure of the board, there's a couple of things that you could consider doing. So, basically, it takes two motions, as you might have remembered me telling you in July, right? Do you guys remember this? This is a quiz. The first motion is to. Offer the job. So, the first motion is to offer the job. And so, then you call, so when that happens, then you call the candidate and we offer the job, then, then you, it's pending agreement on a contract. So, that's what the first motion is. And then later, like another board meeting, not tonight, would be the approval of the contract. That's, that's the second time that that actually gets you a superintendent. Does that make sense? Sarah, do you guys remember?
Mr. Gerhart said he was watching. He sent you a message just in case. I don't know.
This is Mr. Gerhart. I would vote for Doug. Watched the video and reviewed the survey, just FYI, so we would have his buy-in. Thank you, Sean, if you're out there for sending that.
So, so obviously, we worked on the contract, remember? We got the contract done, but we didn't put numbers in it. We just got it ready. And so, you know, if you were interested in offering Mr. Minser the contract, then that's what you would need. The motion is to offer the contract for superintendent pending agreement on a contract.
Because I started this with the motion to make him the interim superintendent, I would like to make that motion, that we offer the job of superintendent of Trent Public Schools to Mr. Doug Minser.
I would support that.
Motion by Mr. French. Mr. French, can you write down your own motion? Because we're going to have to have that recorded.
Is Robin listening? I would support that.
Motion by Mr. French, support by Mr. Hawkins, and maybe for a decision of this magnitude, we'll do a roll call.
Any other discussion or anything?
Any other discussion? I'm sorry.
To Rachel's point, I do agree, sometimes an outside idea or ideas, I think, could be beneficial to the district. So, while we're looking maybe at other positions or backfilling positions, we just got a great view of candidates. We've talked about other positions in the central office or the cabinet. There's some phenomenal people here, but there's some phenomenal people in our district as well already that did not apply. But I do, to your point, understand that and I think looking outside. And I know I was one who was against it, but I think it was a great process and I appreciate that everybody stuck with that and brought me along on it. And I think we got to see some, some great people and showed that our internal people can compete with anybody around the state. So, I think that was, brought the fresh air, too.
In just one second, and I just want to thank you, Dr. Green and MASP for guiding us through this process. I think you provide all school boards with a lot of resources and I think this is exactly what we needed to get to this step and to get to this step confidently and to have involved the public in the process. And so, I think this was really beneficial and so I appreciate your timeliness and your guidance through the process. Any other comments?
I wanted to echo that, too, because we worked quite a little bit on the contract together and I think through this process, even though we ended up where we could have started from, we made everything better, I feel like, by getting that outside perspective and improvements to the contract that we're going to use. And I would like to see us, you know, expand our search outward for different positions if it ever, you know, funding is so uncertain right now, but I would like to get some outside perspectives and I think it was valuable to see that tonight. And last night.
Yes, I very much echo that. I did love to see the outside perspectives as well. And I was going to say, I appreciated your services as a mediator in this because I think that that output may have ended differently had, had we not had a little bit of guidance in just enforcing us to mark things down when we didn't necessarily want to.
Thanks, Megan.
I'll take an opportunity. Thank you. You provided exactly what this board needed, was that third party to kind of guide us. Your experience in this certainly benefited us and our thinking caps went to the side. I made a statement when we decided to go after outside services that none of us are experts at hiring a superintendent, that's not our day job, and you made us look like we're experts. Thank you for that.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I think that it's been a great experience working with you. You've made this very easy for us, very understandable. You've been a great asset to this team and thank you very much. This has been great.
We're ready to vote.
If we're ready to vote. Mrs. Drake?
Yeah.
Mr. French is a yay. Mr. Gerhart is absent still. Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Howie?
Yes.
And Mrs. Lear?
Yes.
Well, in the absence of Mr. Hawkins, it is a unanimous vote.
Well, I'm here.
Mr. Gerhart.
I mean, Mr. Gerhart.
Thank you.
The other Mr. Hawkins.
And congratulations to Mr. Minser. Yes, congratulations.
So, so what I would suggest, and we can do this, but before we make any, any call, so putting the contract together, right? We've got a contract together, but normally, I would send that to the candidates before the second round, right? And then I say to them, hey, if you have any questions on the contract, let us know type of thing. So, obviously, we can still do that, but I was going to suggest maybe a committee to, to finish the contract. Have you guys, have you guys done this work before where you, you know, how do you derive at the salary? And, you know, we've got everything ready, it's just those couple of things that we need to do. Did you have any interest in how that would work? Or, I'm looking at the board president because a lot of times, the board president does this kind of thing, but I said I would help you with this.
Right, I'm happy to do it or I'm happy to have the committee finish the work they started, if that makes sense. I know Rachel's been very involved. I'm open to anything.
And I can help, I can help by being the go-between and then I can work off of the committee. Would that, would that work?
Is that okay with the existing committee?
Small group, that we do and just get everything organized.
Yeah, absolutely. So, so are you interested in me making a call to see if he accepts? If I have his cell number? Somebody else might have it. Kelly, you might, you could probably call.
You want to call?
He's probably watching, hopefully.
No, he's not watching.
Tell him to call in on the line so you can use that phone.
What, do we know what the number is?
See, I, you know what? I don't even think I have his cell. I don't think I have his cell.
No, they're saying to call this number.
Yeah, we're going to ask him.
So, what's, what's his cell number?
Now, we shouldn't say it.
No.
No, don't say it.
No, let me, I'm going to just.
She's texting the number to hear.
I'm going to text him the number for this phone so we can put him on speaker.
Oh, all right. Good idea.
The number for this phone is.
Seven, three, four, six, nine, two.
Seven, three, four, six, nine. He's probably already dialing.
Four, five, one, three.
Four, five, one.
Rod, and you are going to send a correspondence to all the candidates.
Yeah, I'll call him all tonight. I think Doug's the only one I don't have his cell in my phone for some reason.
Don't screw this one up.
Don't hang up on him.
If we do that, you should let him know it's, or you should just answer without being on speakerphone, maybe. Instead of putting him on there.
Right, you're right.
It might not be.
Yeah, usually.
Technology that I may not be prepared for, but I will pick up the phone. I'll just need help getting it on the speaker without hanging up the. No, I would say maybe not speaker at this point, just a call.
Yeah, that's what he's saying. He's going to the speaker.
I didn't get a response. I texted him with the number.
Here, give me, give me his, give me his number.
He's in the office next door, guys.
Is he?
Is he?
Hold on, I just had it up.
He might not be, he might not be watching.
I just had it.
Got to be watching.
I'm going to, I'm just going to call him. Just one second, one.
Hold on, it says from Douglas' minute. So, do you want, just pick it on speakerphone? Everyone okay with it?
No, I would not.
No.
Here, let me, let me.
Good evening, Mr. Minser. Are you there? Are you there? I, I actually picked up. I didn't put you on speakerphone. I'm actually talking on the phone. And on behalf of the board, and I'm looking at Mrs. Howie. So on behalf of the board, we would like to extend to you the position of superintendent of Trenton Public Schools.
Pending agreement on a contract.
Pending your agreement on a contract. Well, let me put you on, I want to put you on speakerphone to answer that now, okay? Hold on. I think I do that and that. Can you hear us?
Yeah, I can definitely hear everybody. And I have been watching.
And you can respond to everybody now.
Respectfully to the Trenton Board of Education, I 100% accept the position of superintendent of schools.
Great news. Congratulations.
The crowd is going wild.
Now, you've got a lot of work to do. So get up early tomorrow.
Absolutely. Yeah, I have my heart and soul and my, my focus and passion.
Well, the passion is the word that I think everyone experienced yesterday during your interview. We definitely saw your passion. You're well appreciated.
I listened to everyone tonight. I listened to your feedback. It's greatly appreciated and respected. And I heard your concerns. And I will duly note and move forward.
And...
Dr. Green.
Dr. Green. Just went out of my head. Dr. Green wants you to call him so that he can begin the process of getting a contract, okay?
Yes, I can do that. And I'm, I'm wondering, is that an expectation for this evening? I am still shaking or...
No, no, no. Call me tomorrow.
When you get into the office tomorrow morning at 6 o'clock, you can give him a call.
I can do that.
It was a privilege giving you this opportunity on behalf of the board. Thank you so much for being available tonight. This would have been really a bummer if we hadn't been able to call you. Because we couldn't say anything to anybody else.
I was trying to, to reach out.